I call this regular meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is March 7th of 2023. The time is 6:02 PM. Ms. Trevino, let's call the roll.
Mr. Prather.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
And Ms. Mendoza.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. First, we will have our invocation. Thank you so much for being here. We have our Chaplain for San Marcos Fire Department, Chaplain Bill Glasgow.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for the opportunity to come and spend just a moment with you and ask the Lord's blessing on you tonight. So if you'll join me, I would appreciate it. Father, we thank you that you call us to live together under the rule of law and under the leadership of governments you establish. Your word in 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, verse 13, tells us, "That request prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for everyone, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peacefully and in quiet lives, in all godliness and holiness. This is good and pleasing to the Lord, our Savior." So, Father, this evening, I pray, this council will have guideable hearts, help them to have a true sense of service. Fill them with a heavy realization, although that they may exercise earthly power, you are ultimately in control of all destinies, including theirs. Grant them a desire to serve justice rather than any convenience or personal political agendas. We pray for their families as they come and serve, and their city council capacity. And lastly, Lord, I pray that you'll give them a strong, trusting relationship with Jesus Christ, the Good Shepherd, so that they might in turn be good shepherds of the flock you've entrusted to them. We pray all this in the name of Christ Jesus, our Lord. Amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Next, our pledges of allegiance. To the United States, and to Texas. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. All right. It's now time for citizen comments. City Council welcomes comments at regular meetings. Persons wishing to speak during the citizen comment portion of the meeting must have emailed citizencomment@sanmarcostx.gov. Prior to noon the day of the meeting, a call-in number and link were provided to those who needed it for online. Otherwise, sign up before 5:45 in the office today. Speakers may speak once during the citizen comment time period. If a citizen speaks during the citizen comment period on a public hearing topic, they may not speak again. We ask that you not speak again during the public hearing on the same topic. A timer is displayed on the screen. When you state your name, you will have three minutes. And then you will be, I'm sorry, when you have 20 seconds left, you'll be in the yellow. When the timer turns red, your time to speak is up. Mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner. And I'm going to call out the names. Let's see. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. I'm going to call out all 10 names. If you would make note of where you are in the sequence and be ready at such time that we call you up. Online, we have Ms. Capoletta. Then it will be Kelly Frank, Olivia Fatale, Sherry Boyett, Noah Brock, Annie Donovan, Billy Ray Callahan, Susan Peters-Fineski, and Todd Salmy. But I have a business item for us. Ms. Trevino, do we need to continue on in Zoom since we are now all here? Do we need to give the control room time to shift over? What do we need to do?
Do you want to cancel or remove yourself from Zoom? Audio has some time.
Do. Do that. So we can just take ourselves out of Zoom? Okay. All righty. So, Ms. Capoletta, you are first.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Marie Capoletta. Call me LMC. I live at 1322 Belvin. I want to thank the city council. All these years, I've spoken at the podium, and I really appreciate the fact that you listened, that you heard, and that you acted today. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
Kelly, is it Frank or Frankie?
It's Frankie.
Kelly Frankie.
It's me again, one more time, just to get my.
Point across. I thank you again, Mayor and council and staff for allowing me to speak. I'm Kelly Frankie. I'm the Executive Director at Combined Community Action. We administer the Meals on Wheels program here in San Marcos and have done so for over 45 years. I will be here providing comment regarding the Human Services Advisory Board funding recommendations for 2023. I've kind of gone through the numbers with you the last time I spoke with you during your workshop about the number of meals that we are serving, what we've served since 2019, pre-COVID, and through the COVID time. We did request $15,000. We were originally told in November we would receive 8,250. There were some appeals by some agencies regarding the amounts that they were going to receive, and so there were some changes made to the recommendations. We chose to not appeal the 8,250 that we would receive of the 15,000, and we understood that y'all provided counsel to the advisory board. But then, in February, I received that the new recommendation would be 3,000 for Meals on Wheels. So, like I said earlier, it was kind of a shock to see that. What I want to share with you now is I have had the opportunity in the past to actually come out with staff and do intakes for our clients here in San Marcos. So when we bring on a new client, we go and do an interview with them to determine that they're homebound and that they can get a meal. Anyone 160 and over can get a meal. They can come to one of our centers, but to be, when you're homebound, there has to be certain points met. I spoke to a couple that had a home, had lost a home because of some medical issues, money issues, and had to move into a small apartment. The man was so distraught, he was telling me by the end of the month, they would run out of food, that he and his wife would share a can of corn a day the last week of the month until they got food stamps, and how he was going to be so thankful to get these meals that was going to stretch their budget every month so that they would at least get that noon meal, and they could use the money for meals throughout the day. We had another lady that, when I interviewed her, that she was just crying, that this was, you know, the greatest saying, that there was, these meals would be provided to her every day. She knew she would at least get one meal. So those are just some of the stories that I heard that are rarely tear-at-your-heartstrings from the elderly, and it is our job to advocate on their behalf. These people are homebound. I do have staff, and I do have a volunteer here today that have come out in support of the Meals on Wheels program. And you, not only are we providing a meal, it's more than just a meal. We actually are checking on them. We report back, our volunteers report back to the site manager and tell her if there's any mental or social or physical problems going on, so we can reach out to the family and let them know. So, didn't bog you down with the numbers this time, but we do provide a great service, and I appreciate all the work you do, and I know this is tough. There's many nonprofits that are deserving of the funding, so thank you so much for your time.
Next is Olivia. If you could give us your last name. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, hi, all. Basically, I'm going to share some thoughts on the new police agreement that you guys are currently working on, since you so amazingly decided to do that. On Saturday, February 25th, I attended the vigil of Joshua Wright as an activist and a concerned citizen. In researching who Joshua Wright was, these are the facts. He was a black man. He had a Black Lives Matter Facebook with a sizable following. He was a beloved son and father. He also had a smile so big and so bright that the knowledge that this smile was gone from the world forever brought me to absolute tears. He also went to Christian church services. I cried again when his pastor gave a speech so powerful that it moved me, a woman of different belief. I cried for his mother, who was so passionate about justice for her son. I cried for Joshua Wright's daughter, who has to go through her life telling people that her daddy was shot by the police and not have a father. Who was Joshua Wright to me? He is arguably our latest exploitation for the Hartman Reform. This death hits me too close to home to not treat it with the utmost respect. To me, Joshua Wright was a man who lived, worked, and got arrested on nonviolent charges. He was a community member in a city that I have made a home in. Mr. Wright was serving time in the Hayes County Jail. I'd been held in that jail. While in that jail, Mr. Wright had a need for medical treatment. He was then transferred to Ascension Seaton in Kyle, Texas. He was then admitted to the hospital. I don't know if everyone knows this, but when you leave this jail for medical treatment, a Hayes County officer escorts you and stays with you the whole time. The corrections officers are not the ones that are supposed to do that. It's Hayes County Police. We don't know what happens because the reports of what happened are very conflicting. What we have been told is that Joshua Wright was shackled, but his handcuffs were removed. He was shot in the back six times by his officer escort. The reason for the officers discharging his weapon was that Joshua Wright picked up a sharp object and tried to kill the officer. Excuse me, where did the sharp object come from? Who was negligent enough to leave such an implement? If there was a sharp object that could be used to kill it all, the city council needs to watch and review the body cam footage of the incident to aid in council's review of the police department and decisions over the new policy agreement. As for Joshua Wright, I am responsible for his murder. His blood is on my hands. I vote in every election. I helped elect the city representatives through the years. The city representatives who have let the police association and department run unfettered. Joshua Wright's blood is on your hands, too.
Our next speaker is Sherry Boyett.
Good day, Sherry Boyett, Hayes County Animal Advocate. I thank you for the time. I'm here to remind you tonight that we've been working on this Positive Outcome Implementation Plan for five years, and when I say "we," it's a lot of people. It's you who are on council, and a lot of staff members who have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours making recommendations, which were proposed in the five-year plan. The Positive Outcome Implementation Plan began in 2018 when this council directed staff to achieve a 90% live outcome rate and had a five-year goal. This plan was to save more animals at the shelter, and a committee was established by the staff and stakeholders, which met, had surveys and more surveys, online surveys, three meetings, work sessions, and from all of that, there have been recommendations to sterilize animals upon impound, to continue the community cat program, to microchip animals, and to do best practices, including minimizing the stay of animals. We have never wavered from these recommendations, and those include professionals, including myself, who's been an executive director and has been very trained in lots of conferences and books. So again, I'm asking for your support so the animal shelter services people can move forward. They have 150 animals right now to take care of, 130 dogs, 25 cats, and we hope that tonight this can be successfully put so we can move forward with adoptions and education moving in a positive direction. Thank you so much. Let's save those lives.
Next is Noah Brock.
Members of the city council, my name is Noah Brock, and I live in the San Marcos ETJ, and I'm here to speak about the SMART Terminal Development Agreement. My wife and I moved to San Marcos because I found my dream job at Texas State University. I manage a makerspace where students learn how to design and fabricate objects using cutting-edge technology. My passion is helping my community learn how to better themselves so that they can create a better future. My focus here is community, not development. Community should drive development, not the other way around. We hear the promise of quality jobs that this development will bring. We hear the promise of a living wage that this will bring, but these are just empty. The developer does not currently have any clients or interested parties that want to build here. We know San Marcos wants to attract people that can contribute to the community, and what better way to do that than with high-paying, quality jobs? This is just an empty promise. Well, what about us? I told you that I came here for my dream job. In the time that my wife and I have lived in San Marcos, we learned that the city wants to develop the land across the street from our house into heavy industrial rail park. My immediate gut reaction is to sell our house and move. But then I start thinking to myself, do we even stay in this city? Why would the city support a project that makes its citizens question their ability to stay and live within its community? A development like this will drive people like my wife and I out. What incentive do we have to stay? Then I think about how lucky I am because I can pick up and move. Others in my community are not so lucky. There are families that have lived here, in my area, for generations. Many of my neighbors didn't realize what drastic changes SMART will bring to our neighborhood. Together, our community held a town hall meeting to inform all of our neighbors of the details of this project because they were not adequately informed. We had over 60 people show up to listen and voice their concerns with us. It is clear that the city just wants to do the bare minimum of what is required by the Development Code and the law. Members of the city council, you have the ability to make changes to this development agreement. You have the ability to put visions forward to better produce better development practices. You have the ability to do better than the minimum. Do you know what the bare minimum gets you in school? A C. San Marcos can do better than a C. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Annie Donovan.
My name is Annie Donovan, and I live in the San Marcos ETJ. I came to provide an update on my correspondence with the SMART developer, Scarborough Lane Development, also known as Franklin Mountain in the Development Agreement. The Planning and Zoning Commission delayed the rezoning decision because they felt our community was not given enough time or information about the expansion and rezoning of the SMART project. They asked the developer to work with my neighbors and I, along with the rest of the community, to organize meetings with us so that we can be given the opportunity to better understand our concerns and needs. I appreciate the proppiness of their correspondence, but the fact that they are not willing to budge or accept any of our requests on dates or times for the meeting is unacceptable. During a meeting with our community a week ago, a little over 60 of my neighbors stated that weekends are more accessible. Many of us work 40 hours a week. Many of us commute to San Antonio or Austin, and many of us get stuck in rush-hour traffic that takes an hour and a half or two hours to get home. I received an email yesterday from Mr. Kendall to let me know that they have changed the location for the meeting a third time. The date they provided was also the second time it has changed in less than a week. The open house meeting is taking place at the Martindale Schoolhouse from 3:00 to 7:00 PM on Wednesday, March 15th. I think the location works because it is in the vicinity of the area that will be heavily affected by heavy industry, but the timing and date do not work. The open house setting is a nice try, but is an effort to divide our community and attempt to prevent us from holding space together. The week of Wednesday, March 15th, is the same week that Texas State University and Hayes County ISE have spring break. It is also the week of South by Southwest. Specifically, Wednesday, March 15th, is a quote "Austin Industry Day" at South by Southwest, which means that the Creative Industries Expo is free to the public. If this isn't strategic planning to schedule the meeting on a day and time when traffic on I-35 is going to be the busiest, then I don't know what is. That one-and-a-half-hour commute time from Austin may be double, making the weekend, excuse me, making the meeting even less successful than it would be on any normal Wednesday. Despite my efforts to collaborate with Mr. Kendall, he is a concrete wall unwilling to budge. Do we want to invite this type of business into our community? I implore you to truly consider your decisions and how deep of an impact this developer will make on our city. What legacy do you want to leave behind, and how do you want your constituents to remember you? Thanks.
Next speaker is Billy Ray Callahan.
Could y'all turn that light on just a bit?
Yes. No, it's the ones in the back. And the control room, if you could turn on the light for the speaker station?
Okay. Yes, my name is Billy Ray Callahan, I live at 740 Center Street here in San Marcos, Texas, and this letter is addressed to Mayor Jane Houston and the city council. It is written in the Holy Scriptures that man born of woman, your days on this earth shall be numbered. Now, let's take the number 100. It is rare that people on this earth live to see their 100th birthday. Now, let's take the following 10 commandments. Number one, thou shalt not have no gods before me. Number two, thou shalt not call upon Lord God in vain. Number three, thou shalt remember to keep the seventh day holy. Number four, thou shalt honor thy father and thy mother. Number five, thou shalt not worship any gravy images. Number six, thou shalt not commit adultery. Number seven, thou shalt not kill. Number eight, thou shalt not steal. Number nine, thou shalt not bear false witness against thy neighbor. And number 10, thou shalt not cover anything that of thy neighbor. Now imagine, if you will, that there are 10 years assigned to each commandment. This would equal 100 years. Now use this scenario as an example to be applied to a rogue officer by the name of Ryan Hoffman and a jailer by the name of Castillo. If you took 100 years and subtract it by the present age at the time the rogue officer and the jailer committed a horrible crime against Joshua Wright, what you have left from 100 is the amount of time both individuals have left to live on this earth. What is also written in the Holy Scriptures, "That vengeance is mine," says the Lord. Now according to Mayor Jane Houston and council, they as a governing body have no jurisdiction over the county jail that is located in their beloved city. However, Governor Greg Albert does have that jurisdiction. As you well know, on February 16th, he gave a State of the State address in San Marcos, Texas. Unfortunately, that address was one-sided and did not address the following concern, and that concern is the unlawful execution of Joshua Wright when he was shackled and was trying to escape from a jailer employed by the Hayes County Department of Corrections. The rogue officer previously teased Joshua Wright in his private poets, making him stir out, and that caused an immediate medical emergency to occur in San Marcos, Texas, but he was shipped to a hospital facility in Kyle, Texas, and unfortunately, he was executed by gunfire. These concerns, oh yes, there is a body camera footage that must be made available to the public at large thanks to the Freedom of Information Act.
Mr. Callahan, your time is up, but I do have a copy of your comments. I'll make sure each council member gets a copy of this page.
Thank you very much. I have, well, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Peters-Fineski. All right. And following her will be Todd Salmy.
My name is Susan Peters-Fineski, and I'm here to, first of all, thank you for considering a more humane pet store ordinance. I also wanted to thank the ladies that work at the shelter, and I agree with everything that they said. I do volunteer at a lot of shelters, and it would be very helpful if we could pass this ordinance and we weren't importing animals out of state that are unaltered. I'm very passionate about this. I'd like to see the population of animals that are uncared-for go haytown. We're kind of celebrating right now because Corpus Christi just passed this ordinance, so we're very pleased with that. Bailing Out Benji has done a lot of research, and they have sent it to you. I represent Puppy Mail Awareness Day. We're in like the Round Rock, Texas, area. We've been at this for 14 years. Bailing Out Benji has stepped in and done incredible research, and we're just hoping that you consider passing this. We also have it on state level, and we're hoping to get it state level. Right now, we have, this Corpus became the 15th, I believe, city, and we have cities like Dallas, Houston. We have some states that have passed completely, too. We have Maine, Illinois, just to name a few. So we hope you consider this, and thank you for your time, and thank you for caring. I appreciate you.
Todd Salmy.
Well, good evening, city council. My name is Todd Salmy, and I serve as the President of the Board of Directors for Southside Community Center. Since 1927, Southside has worked here in San Marcos to meet the needs of our neighbors through direct services, including food, shelter, and emergency assistance, and we've tried to do all this while we enhance human dignity and strengthen our community. Tonight, you will consider recommended allocations to the 2023 Human Service Grant Funding, and the proposed recommendations represent almost a $36,000 cut in city funding for Southside. In particular, our specific assistance program, which we use to directly help our neighbors in need, has been reduced to $4,000. That means Southside will only have $333 each month of city funding to meet all the emergency needs that come in through our doors daily. Every dollar you put into this program helps people, directly helps people in need, but the converse is true. Every dollar that's cut from this funding is one more person that we're unable to help. So we ask that you fund Southside Human Service projects at their existing 2022 level. Southside appreciates the complexity of this process. We've been involved and an active, engaged participant in it, and it is a really, really complicated process. And we're appreciative of each of the city council members, of each of y'all, for your civic leadership and for the way that the city supports our local nonprofits. Southside will continue to serve our neighbors. We offer a free daily meal at 4:00 PM every day to anyone who wants it, including y'all. I invite y'all to stop by. JJ is a fantastic chef and serves a really great meal. And Southside also is providing emergency shelter. We've already opened twice just this year alone, helping keep people safe overnight in dangerous weather, and we have a transitional shelter onsite, which provides a stable place as they move, as people move towards self-sufficiency. And Southside continues daily to work with our neighbors who come into our office. They come in and they ask for a little bit of help and to solve a pressing issue, and we want to be able to help them before those turn into life-shattering crises that they have to deal with. One of the most effective ways the city can help people in need is providing Southside the needed funds to help our neighbors. Southside is here, and we're ready to keep helping. We're ready to help build a stronger, more compassionate, and more completely flourishing community here in San Marcos. A cut in city funding will have a direct impact on the ways that we can help our neighbors. Thank you.
Council, this ends our citizen comment time period. Ms. Reyes, if you'll flip the lights for us again, please. Our consent agenda today only has five items on it. However, those five may be acted upon by one motion.
Motion to approve the consent.
Are there any items to be pulled before I accept that motion? None? Okay. So we'll give the credit for the motion to Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Mendoza, with no items pulled. Ms. Trevino.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Motion, Page 7 to 0.
All right. So now we're into the public hearing portion of our program. Ms. Trevino, item six, please.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2023-24, amending the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ-23-04 by rezoning approximately 16.234 acres of land, more or less out of the Joel Minor survey, abstract 321, Hayes County, Texas, located at 2,700 North Interstate Highway 35, at the intersection of the northbound frontage of Interstate Highway 35 and saddle runway from MH, manufactured housing, and FD, future development, to HC, heavy commercial, or subject to consent of the owner, and other less intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date, and consider approve ordinance 2023-24 on the 1st of Tuesday.
Ms. Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Hernandez, interim Director of Planning and Development Services. The subject property is approximately 16 acres. It's within the city. It's within the city limits along IH thirty-five and is located adjacent to Saddle Runway. Next slide. There's currently a single-family home on the property, and the adjacent land is either vacant or part of the Saddle Brook Manufactured Home Community. Next slide. The property is currently zoned manufactured home and future development, and the applicant is requesting heavy commercial zoning. In addition to the manufactured home zoning that is adjacent to the property, just wanted to point out that there is heavy commercial and light industrial also in the area. Those are both the Whisper North and Whisper South developments. Next slide. The property is in a low-intensity zone on the preferred scenario map. Next slide. And heavy commercial is considered a special zoning district. Special districts are not preferred in low-intensity zone, which means this request for a special district should be individually and carefully considered. Next slide. The applicant is proposing flex buildings with a variety of office and distribution uses. Next slide. A portion of the property along IH thirty-five is located within the floodplain, but the parcel is not located in any other environmentally sensitive areas. Next slide. Thoroughfare planned streets and other infrastructure would be addressed at the time of plating. San Marcos is the water and wastewater provider for this property, and Peternalis will provide electricity. Next slide. A draft of restrictive covenants were included in your packet. They're on page one eighty-eight of your packet. This slide is a summary of what is included in that draft document. First, as we've done with other heavy commercial and heavy and industrial-type zoning districts, we are writing out and prohibiting some of those bad neighbor uses. And then, second, the applicant is proposing a buffer, which would be thirty feet in width with additional trees and an eight-foot masonry wall, where the code in this instance would require a twenty-foot buffer with fewer trees and a six-foot masonry wall. Those are some of the items that we have worked out with the applicant to this point for your consideration. Next slide. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended denial of the request, citing adverse impacts to the Saddle Brook Manufactured Home Park as the primary concern. Staff recommended approval of this request, and that concludes my presentation.
I will now open the public hearing. And, taking my rest. Open the public hearing, if you would. If you wish to speak far against or about, if you approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Ms. Snow.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm Eric Marcella, the co-founder of Balcony's Real Estate Group. Talking about the parcel that we are looking to get rezoned. The, we have drafted the restrictive covenants to basically mirror the properties and the Whisper North and Whisper South properties that have, that are directly adjacent to our proposed property in the middle, that is adjacent to the Saddle Brook community, that after taking into consideration the Planning Commission's recommendations against the more intensive uses, we have decided to draft restrictive covenants, which should be in your packet, to prohibit truck stop uses, gasoline sales, vehicle services, and any waste-related services. We've also drafted the restrictive covenants to, as was mentioned, build an eight-foot masonry wall. That wall is the exact same wall that will be built for the northern property and the southern property to, adjacent to ours, that actually have presented these exact same restrictive covenants and was accepted. So we are simply proposing the exact same restrictive covenants that have already been proposed based on the adjacent properties, and in fact, we're further limiting those by restricting our height to forty feet. Really, the main thing that, what we're trying to build is similar, hopefully, each of you have a rendering, and it's very similar to, what we're trying to build on this property is very similar to that. We, myself and my fellow co-founder Otto Swingler are both from central Texas. I'm from San Antonio, he's from Austin. We are central Texas developers that build this specialty product type, trying to build it kind of all throughout the central Texas region, which really is a product type that is suited towards small businesses and really not at all towards the obnoxious uses that Saddle Brook and the Planning Commission did not want. And that's why we are happily willing to restrict those uses. Really, we're just a local firm. We're not some big-time developer. We build these properties with the intent of holding them and owning them long-term. We take a lot of pride in the design, the time, the money that we spend on these properties, and this property will be no different. We ask that you guys consider the, all the restrictive covenant changes, including the addition that we have added, that will make our property uniform with the property to the north and to the south of us, again, which both have actually more linear footage of connection to the Saddle Brook community, so we actually have the least amount. And, but decided to mirror all those restrictive covenants and again, add the height limit. Happy to answer any questions that you have on any of the, any of the covenants or the property itself or any of the other issues. Thank you. Appreciate it, Todd.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers wishing to speak on this item? Far against or about? Is Ms. Capoletta on?
No.
Okay. So I will close the public hearing, and I'm looking for a motion from Council.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion for Mr. Scott to approve. Does that include the restrictive covenants?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Garza. Ms. Hernandez, could you tell us which page these covenants are on? And were these in our packets that we downloaded over the weekend?
Yes, ma'am, it should have been. I'm on page one eighty-eight, and I've downloaded the entire packet, but I did download mine yesterday, so I'm not sure if the numbers would have changed between now and then.
Okay, because when I asked about this, I was, the response was, we'll try to have one by tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am, and I was working from home because I was not feeling well, and I didn't have internet, so I wasn't able to find it on my phone, and I apologize for that. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to make sure to put the terms in the presentation. Also noticed that we did miss that forty feet in height. My apologies for that as well.
Okay. And is this, I hate to say exactly, but I will. Are these exactly the same restrictions that are in the other agreement that was for a different company, but that was next to Saddle Brook?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that the one? They were next to Saddle Brook also, weren't they?
Just south of this property is that light industrial zoned area, which we just zoned recently. It was in twenty-twenty-two. I have pulled up the restrictive covenants that are actually recorded for that project, and they are nearly similar. I think that they elaborated in the Whisper one to say exactly what vehicle services were included, but those are all listed in the code. So vehicle services is a category that has subbullets that we would include in that, as well as waste-related services. But yes, it had the list of prohibited uses. It has the Type C protective yard with the addition of more trees and things of that nature and the eight-foot wall. And then, in addition, they have added in this restrictive covenant the forty-foot height limitation.
Yeah, it's following all of the survey notes, and sometimes it's hard to find things when they're there. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Council, discussion?
Mayor, does this take a supermajority?
Yes. Yes, it will.
I have a question.
Wait, hold on. Ms. Mendoza is next.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'll call.
No, you're two. I thought you pointed at me.
No, I, that was a, yes, I acknowledge that you want to say something.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, to staff and to the developer themselves, thank you for considering the changes. That's a big thing. Saddle Brook is pretty sensitive to a lot of us here because they're, most of them are renters, or they're renters, so they really don't have the ability to voice their concerns. I'm inclined to vote for this because of the restaurants, because of the office areas, and the fact that we are going to be restricting the truck traffic is very promising to me. So I think, I think I like.
Did you say restaurants?
Yes, ma'am, this does have the ability to have restaurants in there. According to the code, I'm looking here, they can add.
They can. Do we know if they're gonna?
You never know what they're gonna add in here. I can just say I'm hopeful that restaurants will be there.
Well, you said restaurants, like maybe you knew something.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm just hoping that restaurants will be there because that community definitely needs something to go to.
Yeah. Mr. Gleason.
All right, I have a question for a developer. If you'd mind.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate you going through and mimicking the restricted covenants that have passed in the past, and, you know, but each zoning case can be, can be very different. And just throwing that out there. On your renderings here, which I appreciate, you know, of course, they're not binding by any means, I don't consider these forty-foot tall in any capacity. Do you take this type of structure and take it to forty-foot capacity for warehousing capacity? What is, what is the idea to keep, where does your forty-foot number kind of coming from?
Really, just as a reduction from the base zoning, which is sixty feet. So, you know, we, to give an example, our most recent project in, by the airport in Austin, the buildings are, for this type of product, you kind of refer to it, the clear height, which is the interior, so the exterior is another four or five feet for architectural purposes. So, you know, whether it's thirty-three feet to thirty-eight feet, you know, it's kind of falls somewhere in there, so we wanted to, wanted to make sure we said something that was, you know, fair.
All right, that's good. I just want, kind of wanted some clarification. And then, you know, I really don't have a problem with this up against the interstate. My only issue is, of course, it is directly up against the manufactured home. And I think having the eight-foot stone fence helps. There's a lot of things that you've conceded on and agreed to that I still have a little bit of issue with that forty-foot height being that close. And, you know, just has me concerned. What is your overall intentions with this? Is it more warehousing? Is it more commercial-based? Or is it?
I think the best way to describe it would be something for small tenants, right? So we will go in and we will build, you know, each individual suite out upfront. And so really, this is, it's a, it's a product type that can serve any sort of small business. There's, you know, to give an example, it fits within the commercial services zoning within Austin. I think, you know, I know you're not Austin, but just to kind of give it, give an example there, you know, it could be anyone from a, you know, Royal Blue Grocery is in a similar property that we have in Austin. You also have, you know, a pest control company might have their headquarters there, you know, or a local architect or engineer might have their, their office there. It really just depends, but, but it will be not big distribution uses, you know, similar to the north of the property, Whisper North. That's, it's completely different than that. And those are, those are larger distribution uses that have a lot of truck traffic. We have very minimal truck traffic, hence our willingness.
So you're more in the lines of building something like a spec building and then kind of filling it out as needed?
Yes, exactly. That's exactly correct.
All right. I think that's the only question left for now.
So you're sounding like you're talking more retail, so why did you ask for heavy commercial?
So it's not necessarily retail. The idea is to be flexible for any small business owner in the area that, you know, maybe you have some sort of warehousing, you know, something, maybe you're a cosmic kombucha is a great, great example, right? You know, you might have somebody that stores some of their kombucha, maybe they have a sales office there, right? That's a, that's a great example of what it is. So it's not necessarily one hundred percent retail, which is obviously why, why we don't want that. Has kind of a, a little bit of a warehousing component, but not a distribution component, so to speak.
I'm, I'm concerned about the forty-foot. But that's what we approved for the other one.
And there also is a thirty-foot buffer yard, so the, the height.
Thirty-foot doesn't, that doesn't do much for me when you're talking about a forty-foot building. I mean, it's good, but it.
What is, and that thirty-foot buffer would include the fencing and then all the landscaping requirements on top of it?
Yes, sir. And just to be clear, the other, we actually added in the forty feet because the base zoning, which is approved on, on the north and the south properties, are sixty feet.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
So, so we're further limiting it.
Okay. Anything else to say? If not, we're gonna vote.
Yeah, I, it's one of those areas where we need more services, and it's how do we balance this? And I have concerns with it being heavy commercial, being that close.
I wanted to see the commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we need the restaurants and other services, and we're not seeing that.
And I do like, and I do like the idea that you're flexible, you know. The spec building thing is kind of taking over the world, and it really has, and I understand why, is you don't know where things are going to be in a couple of years or not. It leaves you some open flexibility. It's just that, it's, it's a tough one.
Council, are we ready? This is first reading.
Yes.
We'll have second reading in two weeks. It'll be on consent. We won't make any changes. We'll need to pull it.
Right.
Another thing, too, is it will require a supermajority.
This requires a supermajority. Trevino, let's vote and see where we end up.
Okay.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
No.
Ms. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prater.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
And the motion passes six to zero.
Okay, on to item seven.
Six to one. Yes, receive a staff presentation. Hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five amending the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ dash twenty-three dash zero eight by rezoning approximately one point eight-one-one acres of land out of Cottonwood Creek, Phase Three, Unit Nine, Lot One, in Hayes County, Texas, located north of the intersection of Rattler Road and Monterey Oak from GC General Commercial to CD dash four, character District Four, or subject to consent of the owner, another less intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five on the first of two readings.
All right, presentation.
Mayor and Council, Amanda Hernandez, interim Director of Planning and Development Services. The subject property is almost two acres. It's located within the Cotton Creek neighborhood. Next slide. The parcel's currently vacant, and it's surround by, surrounded by residential uses. There's a commercial strip center on Highway one twenty-three, as well as a playground across the street. Next slide. The yellow circle on this slide will indicate where the property is within the overall Cottonwood Creek master plan. Next slide. The property is currently zoned general commercial, and the applicant is proposing a zoning change to character District Four. Next slide. The property is in a low-intensity zone on the preferred scenario map. Next slide. Character districts in low-intensity zones are subject to Table four point six, which is on the next slide. Table four point six says a change from general commercial to character District Four should be considered. Next slide. Character District Four allows residential and commercial uses, and the applicant has indicated a desire to incorporate townhomes in this area. Next slide. The property is not within an environmentally sensitive area. Next slide. The Cottonwood Creek infrastructure is mostly built out. San Marcos Water and Waste, San Marcos is the water and wastewater provider, and Blue Bonnet provides the electric service. Next slide. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request with a six to one vote. There were concerns regarding the loss of commercially zoned property, which had been discussed at Planning Commission on a few occasions, and staff recommended approval as presented. That concludes my presentation.
I will open the public hearing and see who would like to speak on this item. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to speak on this item? Far against or about? If not, we have online, I believe we have Ed Terrio. Are all these folks on, Ms. Trevino?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll let him turn on his camera, and we will hear from Ed Terrio, who has the usual three minutes, and he knows to give his name and address.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Ed Terrio, and my address is one twenty Lakeview Circle in Lockhart. I'm here tonight representing Randall Morris and his request to rezone this platted commercial lot to CD four, which is one of the relatively new character districts. As stated by staff, the property is and has been for going on twenty years, almost, general commercial. Mr. Morris would like to rezone this to CD four to provide for both the possibility of residential uses such as cottage ports, garden homes, or townhomes, and in addition to neighborhood business uses and shopfront retail. We support the recommendation of the staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we're available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, our next speaker is Randall Morris.
I don't see him online, ma'am.
uses such as cottage ports, garden homes, or townhomes, and in addition to neighborhood business uses and shopfront retail. We support the recommendation of the staff and the planning and zoning commission, and we're available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, our next speaker is Randall Morris.
I don't see him online, ma'am.
Okay, then we'll go on to Jenny Frisbee.
I don't see him online. Hello, ma'am.
Is Kimberly John Hopkins online, or...
She's online. I'm trying to promote her, but she's not, it's not being accepted.
She's got to respond, okay. Kimberly John Hopkins, if you can hear me, there's going to be something on your screen you need to respond to so we can hear from you.
Mayor, this is Ed. I don't believe Kimberly's going to be speaking tonight.
Okay. Do you know about Mr. Morris?
We sent them the links, but I'm not sure that they were able to go in tonight.
Okay. And so, Ms. Trevino, we don't have Jenny Frisbee either?
Kimberly Johnson is online. I don't know if she...
Jenny Frisbee, do we have her?
Yes, she's on.
Is she ready?
Yes. Hi, this is Kimberly Johnson Hopkins. I'm also with Ed Terrio, DuSett Associates. And I am available to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. And do we have Jenny Frisbee?
Jesus.
Okay. Is Ms. Capaletta?
No, she's not on.
She's not here either. Okay. All right. Anyone else? Last call in the chambers? I will close the public hearing, and I'm seeking a motion...
Move to approve.
This one.
I'll second it.
Was that Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That whole conversation we just had about commercial services being needed in areas, that's the letters that we got from the, I would say, from the public, from the residents in that area, is they're against this rezoning because they want to, the ones that we heard from, because they want to see more commercial services. And this may mean that there will be fewer.
I have a question, ma'am. Can I have a question for Mr. Hernandez? I know there's some commercial allowed under CD4. Could you give us a list of those or to the public? I know they're in the chart, but just for reference.
Absolutely. I was just headed there because I anticipated the question. And one of the great things about our character districts is they do allow a mix of residential and commercial, depending on what the market demands at the time. But just in general, there are some office uses that would be permitted. Eating establishments, so potentially a restaurant. It talks about a gym or a health club.
Does Big C say something on corners?
It talks about commercial on corners, yes. The zoning district intent statement. But some of those service uses, eating establishments, so, you know, a coffee shop could go in there, health club or gym. The apartments could be, it could be apartments above, it could be a small building on the corner that would house the commercial, and then townhomes in the back of the lot. Depends on, like I said, what the market demands and how they configure the site planning for that property.
I have a question for the applicant, for Mr. Terrio.
Mr. Terrio?
Let me promote him back. I don't know why he was...there it goes.
I think we lost him.
He's getting on.
There he goes.
I'm here. Thank you.
Is this changed in the, is the need, in that you're looking at more residential? Or are you just wanting a more flexible product potentially to do some commercial?
Well, I think he's looking for more flexibility. You know, the zoning has been there for a very long time. And the lot is internal to the neighborhood, so it's a bit of a tough sell on just straight general commercial. The, there has been some commercial that's developed along 123, you know, that provides services to the neighborhood. But I think he's looking for an option, you know, to allow the option of some residential uses on the property. CD4 provides for a variety of mixed, mixed commercial residential. That would probably be the optimal type of use, but I don't think the decision has been made yet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I mean, it's general commercial now.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think it's pretty clear that they're looking at reducing the amount of commercial to provide different, well, more housing.
Well, and I think it does provide them some flexible development, where you might have some potential residential and mixed use, where you would have a commercial underneath, residential up above. There could be some of that, too. I'm not as scared as CD4. I just hate to lose any more commercial land at all out there, right? You know, that's my big concern here, is that there is a need for resources and goods and services out there. So, you know, I'm going to vote in favor of it, but I really hope that the applicant and the landowner really look at that there's some money to be made out of the neighbors of Cottonwood Creek, I think. So, and there's a need, too. So, I'll be in support of it, but I hate to lose any more commercial.
I would think with the rooftops that are out there now, that commercial...
The high school across the street.
Yeah, that there would be more. Anybody else? Ms. Garza?
I am, whoa, that's loud. I am going to be voting against this. I read the written comments from neighbors and just chatting with them. So I live in El Camino Real, so they're like basically my homies, my vecinos. And just like chatting with them, I think they're not particularly comfy with this. Again, a lot of conversation about needing more services. And just living in that area, I have to agree. So that's, that's just my rationale for not supporting this. I talked to quite a bit of neighbors. I annoyed them, but...
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering if they're hoping that someone else is going to come in and put more in on 123, which would be better than further into the subdivision the way that it sits.
May I interject and ask Hayden to put the Cottonwood Creek master plan up on the screen? It's probably three or four slides up from...
I think that'd be great.
Where he is now, because that will give you an idea of the overall proposal, which includes some additional commercial across the street on 123.
And that was one of the areas I was going to go with here, is that if this was directly on 123, I would say no. And it is kind of an odd spot to put commercial only, potentially. So it might be a good fit coming in for a kind of a mixed product.
That's where I was going with that.
Hayden, go up one more slide for me. There you go. It's kind of hard to see, but you can kind of see that red, the red of this particular parcel. And then there's the red to the left of it, which is the current gas station and retail strip, and then across 123 are a couple of two, three parcels as well.
Okay, and those are not yet developed at all, correct?
No.
Oh, I was going to look. I think we had some proposals in for some of them. One of them might actually be a self-storage, if I'm recalling correctly from a couple of years ago. But there is still room over there, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
And I could see that being a hard pitch for a location for retail only.
Because it's inside.
Because it's inside, you got to come in on Cottonwood.
Yeah, I believe I'm going to vote for it simply because it's inside and probably harder to get a commercial entity in there. And they do have commercial on the other side, but I hope it's going to be some retail and not something like self-storage. This isn't a supermajority, is it?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
You know, it kind of reminds me of like outside of Green, where there's some like residential areas that, you know, typical single-family homes, and there's some residential, commercial. Reminds me of some of those neighborhoods around Green.
Yeah. Okay. Any more comments? Ms. Trevino, we'll vote.
Mayor Houston?
I'm going to say yes.
Okay, or Ms. Garza?
I'm going to say no, because my neighbors are going to come for me. They know where I live. My niece is going to go to the park with their kids, and I heard them loud and clear, so I'm going to say no.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
I'm going to be a yes.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And the motion passes six to one.
All right. On to item eight, another public hearing.
Receive a set presentation, hold a public hearing. To receive comments for or against ordinance 2023-26, adopting youth program standards of care for 2023, providing a severability clause, providing for the repeal of any conflicting provisions, declaring effective date, and consider approval of ordinance 2023-26 on the first of two readings.
All right, presentation time.
Good evening, mayor and council. Jamie Lee Case, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm going to hand it off to Jessica Ramos, my recreation manager, to discuss any potential changes that you'll see in your red lines there and answer any questions.
All right. Welcome.
Hello, Jessica Ramos, Recreation Manager. I'm happy to answer questions tonight. I won't go over the big spiel because y'all seen this year to year. So I will say that some of the redlined areas, they just explain things a little further. It's not changing anything by any means. So it's, and some grammatical corrections. So, no big changes, pretty much the same. So, yeah, so if y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right. Then we will open the public hearing on this. And is there anyone in chambers who wishes to speak far against or about this item? Calling once, twice, three times? Ms. Trevino, is Ms. Capaletta?
No.
I think she's teaching the class tonight. Okay. I will close public hearing, and I await a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Prather. I'll give the second to Ms. Garza. Is there any further questions? Thank you for the edits. It's answered some of my questions from previous years.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, we'll vote.
All right, Ms. Garza?
Hi, as always. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Yes, thank you for all the great programs you put on for our community. Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Scott and Mr. Gleason and Mayor Houston.
All right. Ditto what Mr. Prather said. Thank y'all for doing things for our children and our community. So, good job. Thank you. All right, counsel, moving on to item nine. We have closed out the public hearing portion of our program this evening. Item nine.
Consider approval of ordinance 2023-27 on the first of two readings, amending certain funds in the city's 2023-2023 fiscal year budget to authorize the use of funds for one-time, non-recurring park improvements, including procedural provisions and declaring effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion from Mr. Prather, second by Mr. Gleason. Are there any other questions? I asked questions on the message board, because I had in my brain that this money had to be used for park land, not just improvements. And I couldn't find it searching because of the terms I searched for was not in that section. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am, it's both.
Yes. And you have done your best to try to, as it says, keep where the money came in...
Yes, ma'am.
In the same general area?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Counsel, any more discussion?
Thank you for helping us keep this promise. I know we were like, if we take it out of here, we promise we will put it back somewhere. So thank you for helping keeping our word.
Good to be using some of that money. All right, Ms. Trevino, we will vote.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
And Ms. Garza?
Aye. Yeah, I appreciate that, that shout-out, Mr. Prather. And thank you guys for working on this.
On to item 10.
Consider approval of ordinance 2023-28 on the first of two readings, amending Chapter 22 Cemeteries of the San Marcos City Code, by, among other things, correcting topographical errors in various sections and amending sections 22.013 and 22.014, adopting a fee schedule related to the use and operation of the cemetery, providing for the repeal of any conflicting provisions and provide an effective date.
Okay, counsel, I'm looking for a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason. And I need to look and see if y'all had the opportunity to answer my question on the message board. I know what we're looking for is something that's going to, I hate to put it this way, but funerals are very expensive.
The services are, yes, ma'am, that is true.
The casket?
Correct.
Cemetery plot, all of those things are really expensive. And, okay, and I was looking for something here. I was looking for these to be less than a plot.
And I do, Mr. Meagle has a spreadsheet worksheet that I developed to help you guys through this tonight, because I, obviously, mayor, I kind of knew that this was kind of where you were going.
I figured you would know that.
Yes, ma'am. So Mr. Meagle can bring that up for us to kind of work through. Now, part of this, just, and it might be a little small. I don't know.
It's small. Anyway, but just, this is less than a cemetery plot?
It is, yes, ma'am.
But not a whole lot?
Once you add, so there's additional add-ons whenever you go to open the columbarium. The columbarium niche itself and the ossuary are lower for residents, and also lower for non-residents than the normal cemetery lot would be. You know, so we did take that into consideration. We evaluated the corridor, and there's not municipalities that currently provide columbarium or ossuary space. They're sold out, or they just don't offer those services. All of the services that we were evaluating were private, mostly church-owned, and those ran $4,000 was the average. We are much lower than the average. So that, just for...
And that $4,000 was too earned?
And so is this.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I looked at where we've, actually, this is cheaper than I thought it was. So where do we hit break even?
I will have to pull it up.
At 50%, 75% full?
I think that for the tier one, I want to say that it's, we need to sell, there's 72 niches, and I want to say at tier one resident level, I think it's 36, that we would break even. So anything beyond that, any additional revenue realized will go to further expansion. We still have four additional wing walls that we want to install at this location as well. Those wing walls, our last quote was about $220,000 installed. So, you know, over time, obviously, this additional revenue would go towards the acquisition and installation of additional columbarium niches.
Okay. Are we looking at the income here to pay for the structures?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
So we need to pay for that, then if we make some off of that, then we can pay ahead on the others?
Right.
That's a good plan. I like that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel? Questions? Mr. Prather?
If we can just make one amendment on the definitions, to add the definition, a...
What page are you on, sir?
Uh...
At the top of your screen?
317.
Thank you.
On the definitions, if we could add in for the definition for graveyard that primarily refers to burial ground within a churchyard.
Would you say that again, please, sir?
On the 317 on definitions, to add in graveyard, and then the definition of graveyard, primarily refers to burial ground within a churchyard.
And we're welcome, or we could do that. We just don't operate any graveyards. And I think that primarily that's, this is a cemetery. A graveyard would be owned and operated privately. Yes, sir.
I just think we should have that definition.
But if that's not what we have...
Just so people know.
I'm sorry, I'm lost. Because we don't operate, as I understand from this case, we operate a cemetery and not a graveyard, and I'm not sure what the difference is. But that's not what we operate?
Well, and traditionally, the definitions are in there to define something that's in the ordinance.
Right. Yeah. Is that something y'all could work on, and we can talk about it on second reading?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. So this is first reading, and so if there's no other questions, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, we talked about this years back, and I just want to make sure it's in there, that a person's only allowed to buy one, not to let... that a person's only allowed to buy one, not to let somebody come and buy five and resell them to someone else.
Is there a limit?
We did place a limit, I want to say it was in 2021.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe we capped it at six or eight. I'm sorry, I don't have that ordinance immediately in front of me. But we did cap it because previously it was uncapped.
Mm-hmm.
And so anyone could come and purchase 10, 15 lots and get on a payment plan, and
they would have to have at least one lot paid in full in order for use. So what we would find is that they would essentially return them to the city, because, like I said, they were on a payment plans. They had, they didn't, no longer had a need for 10 lots, so they would only purchase what they needed.
But they could not resell them at an additional cost, correct?
We're talking about investors.
Sure.
And cemetery lots.
You never know.
Right, well, I mean, whenever, if someone decides that they want to sell their cemetery lot to, usually it's done within the family. We will, we have to navigate that with the family because they have to register that change with us. So we will actually pull up what that individual paid for the lots, and at that point, it's up to the seller and the purchaser to negotiate that price. And if the purchaser wants to pay more, then, you know, but usually that's not the case, thank goodness. We don't have a whole lot of, you know, sharks out there looking for cemetery lots.
You never know, investors are investors.
Uh, you're not wrong.
But if we've limited the other, is there a limit on any of these?
Um, there is currently not in the ordinance. There is not a limitation on how many columbarium niches someone may purchase.
Okay, so that's something else we'll just give some thought to before the second reading. Is there anything else?
I, I only had.
Wait, okay.
I only had one other comment, just about, I, we've had to be pretty flexible in the family the last few years with burial plots, and including with a family friend who unexpectedly passed away. So just keep in mind that sometimes these are, they come in handy in times of need, and, and including someone who had pre-purchased a handful and was able to then gift one to someone. And the other part of that, too, is the cost goes up over time, is, you know, so just always in the back of my mind, it's something that's, you may be buying one for yourself, but you may not end up in there.
Well, but we're...
We've seen it happen several times.
I, I mean, I think we'd be talking about a limit of eight, 10?
Yeah.
Something like that, so, okay.
Well, and even then, somebody could, you know, families could, the spouse could pick up a couple or whatever.
All right.
Just keep it in mind.
So where we don't have that now, if someone wants to do that on the second reading, just...
I'd be happy to propose some language if it would make it easier.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That'd be good. All right. But for now, how about we vote on this?
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye, and I appreciate the questions that you asked, Mayor Houston. Thank you.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, the motion has a seven to zero.
But thank you to the city, to the Cemetery Commission, for making this option available because this is the way of the future for a lot of reasons I won't even go into. And in the grand scheme of things, it is more economical for a family.
Yes, ma'am, that's true.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, we've got people that I think are here for item 15. Are y'all okay if we just move on to item 15?
Yes.
All right. We're going to go to, I, do we need a break before we start item 15?
Yeah, I just need to get a question.
We will, we will take a, um, 7:22, be back. Then, we are back from our break. We are, we have jumped ahead to item 15. Ms. Vinau?
Receive a staff presentation and approve resolution 2023-51R allocating to non-agencies human services grant funding of $500,000 from the city's general fund, authorizing the city manager of her designate to act as an official representative of the city and those related to said grant funds, including authorization to execute funding contracts with selected agencies on behalf of the city and declaring effective date.
Okay, Council, Ms. Griffith is going to tell us about this, correct?
Yes.
All righty.
So this evening, I'll present some quick background information and present the recommendation of the Human Services Advisory Board for 2023 funding. As you know, City Council provided direction to the HSAB and some additional criteria and considerations in January. On February 9th and 16th, the HSAB met to discuss the council's direction and consider reallocating the funding. So next slide. For reference, I've included two slides that describe the council's direction to the HSAB. For example, council noted that the board should not feel, feel compelled to fund all programs, and they should not allocate funding by percentage across the board. Next slide. In addition, council asked HSAB to prioritize programs which met the four criteria in item number three on this slide, so to prioritize programs which increase services, have an office in San Marcos, complete all quarterly reports on time, and have a proven track record of at least two years serving San Marcos. Next slide. Using this information, staff, using the information that we had, staff awarded five points for each of the four priority items that I just mentioned, and added this amount to the existing score, and then sorted to create a new ranking order. Next slide. Applications did not have enough information to include two of the additional criteria requested by City Council, and these items will be put into effect with the next application cycle. So council had asked not to fund more than 20% of a full-time position and not to fund brand-new startup agencies. So those were not considered this year. Next slide. So using the new rankings, the HSAB reconsidered the allocation of funding. The board strongly desired to fund all 38 applicants. As a first step, the top 15 received 55%, and all others received 20%. Then the board reduced funding for the agencies who had requested very large amounts compared to other applications. Lastly, funding was increased for some long-term San Marcos programs and two that serve unique populations. Next slide. So on these next slides, applicants are listed in rank order. I realize this is small, and you all have a printout of this table to refer to. On each slide, you'll see the amount requested, the original board recommendation, and revised board recommendation. The yellow highlight indicates that the amount changed between the original recommendation and the current one. And we can use these slides for reference as needed. So go to the next slide and then skip a couple. And right there, I do want to bring up that the agency called Community Organizations Reaching Neighbors, or CORN, has since dissolved, and so the $5,000 that was recommended for them can be allocated to other agencies. And I also wanted to note that I looked up information about the SMC ISD School Age Parenting Program, and I found in their application that the district funds about $7,000. The state actually funds quite a bit more, $150,000. The district provides the building, and the school board serves as the board for this organization. So that's the school district's contribution to the program. And let's see, next slide. Um, so I'll be happy to answer any questions, and this concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Griffith, and thanks again to the Human Services Advisory Board. I know that this is one of our more intense boards, although it's for a shorter period of time, and we thank them for the time that they spent, um, working through all of this.
I did get some clarification from the Superintendent of Schools about communities and schools, just to ask him a little bit more about this. So he said that they get their, their funding from the state, but he said that if they were asking for money specifically from the city, then it's probably to serve students that are in SMC ISD families outside of school. They fund it in school. This is to fund the same, like, families that may be in need outside of school. So it, the, the, there would be direct recipients to students within the school district. So it's, it's through communities and schools, not necessarily the school district that are getting the funds.
Okeydoke. That's good to know. Okay, Council, we will pick up where we left off. You will notice on the screen up here, we've got the amount of money by reducing and eliminating some that we had. That's what we've got. We said we wanted to raise some others. And so right now, if you'll kind of raise your hand or whatever, and let me know you have something to say. And Ms. Garza is next.
Sorry, I just, I can't really see. Like, can you just, like, remind me which ones we already voted to move around?
I can tell you that.
Cool.
Um, oops, I say I can. Uh, the communities and schools, we, we thought we might come back to, if you go down to the end, Home Center, um, I tell you what, that's a live spreadsheet. Can we condense the agency, make that column narrower, and the program column narrower so that we can focus on the dollars a little more?
That makes sense.
That's helpful. Um, okay, so we've got, the council recommendation is in the orange, and I believe, um, Mr. Meagle did, was he copied everything over, and then that's how we can make our changes without altering what the revised board recommendation was, so we don't lose that information. Uh, Ms. Garza, we have dropped Home Center to 15. We have, uh, M E L I is zero, and Rough Draft is zero. Treasured Protege is zero. Oh, I'm sorry, that was a different program we were looking at.
So you said Home Center?
We dropped to 15.
Fifteen. And then the M E L J?
Mm-hmm, zero.
Zero.
And Rough Draft, zero.
Okay.
Which is what we've got up here.
And Rough Draft, zero, that's the one who dissolved?
No, CORN is the one that dis- dissolved.
Oh.
Rough Draft was the art program. Yeah, I went around the table on it. Okay, so, Council, um, now's the time for changes, and we'll watch that bottom line that we've got in the big print.
Actually, Mayor, I do have one more.
Okay.
ACCEYSS?
If you'll give us the rank.
This is, uh...
By the new number, then we'll be able to find it.
Uh, rank number 10.
Okay.
An amazing program, but I think if we just take five out of that, it would help another program immensely. Because right now, it looks like they're sitting at 30. If we take five out, they'd still have 30.
Okay, so you're saying 30?
I, I'd be more than happy to take out five out of that $35,000, to leave them with 30.
What I need to know is what number do you want in there now?
I, I'd like to keep it at 30.
30?
Yes, ma'am.
And what's the justification?
Just to spread it to another, another organization that helps with food, it's like, maybe school fuel. That's why I don't want to take too much out of it. It's a great resource, but I think $30,000 is a significant amount for them to be able to, to do STEM and stuff like that.
Hmm, okay. So I need to go around the table and see who is in agreement with that one? No, I see Mr. Gonzalez is a yes, Ms. Garza's a no. Um, Prather and Scott are yes?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, I, I can be fine with that. Okay, so now we've got a little bit more, um, oops, wrong place.
Mayor, writing out about the time, do you recommend, would you give some tip?
Yes. Do you want to go up or down?
I want to go up on the YSB.
Give us the, the number?
I'd like to go to what they originally asked for, it was $22,000.
Mr. Gonzalez, we need the number, please.
Okay.
And the green column?
$15,000.
We know, we need the rank, the number, so we can find it on the page, and we can trail along with you.
Let me see, 19.
That's what we need, thank you. Okay, and where did you want to go with, this was?
I'd like to add, they asked originally 22,000, and we're giving them 44, 4,400. I'd like to give them at least 18,000 to come up to 22 where they were before.
Uh, so actually, you want to put 22,000 in that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Investment in our kids.
Well, we're on this one right now. That doesn't mean we can't. We've still got a little bit of money. So you wanted to go with 22 in there, Mr. Gonzalez?
They originally asked for 20.
No, they wanted 22. So I'll number, it's one of the two, 19. That's, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to go basically the same kind of programs, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Now, wait, what number are you suggesting?
Well, he just asked me if I would break it down to at least half of that. Uh, yeah, well, yeah, that's fine.
I had bumped him up to at least 10 on my sheet.
Well, let's go 10. I'm, I'm good with that.
So there's a yes from Mr. Gonzalez, a yes from Mr. Mendoza?
That's 10 for specific assistance.
No. No, that's San Marcos Youth Service Bureau.
10 for youth services.
Mm-hmm, and was it 22?
Yep, you're good.
Was it the original request?
Yep.
And, and I, I had 10, just to get started. Okay, uh, Mr. Gleason, did you say yes, you're good with 10?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Prather, Mr. Scott? Okay, so yes and yes, Ms. Garza?
I'm just so confused as to why we even have a board if we're deviating so much, and nothing that I'm hearing is very compelling, aside from I like those programs. So I can't even, like, that is just such a, a, I don't, I don't have a comment.
I think I like, the program translates to, I know about the program, and I feel like it's a worthy program. That's what I mean, if I say I like it, that it's a worthy program, what they do.
And I guess we can blanket it with that?
So I'm going to put Ms. Garza down as a no, but I've got a bunch of...
No, I, I'm, I'm, I don't have a yes or a no.
Okay, well, I'll put you down as unknown, but I've got six yeses for 10.
That's fine.
Okay, next item, if somebody wants to go up, now's the time.
Mayor, I'd like to fully fund the Southside Community Center's special assistance requests.
Give us a number, please.
Uh, 19.
Thank you.
It'd be 20,000.
Okay.
And then, same thing with Southside Community Centers.
Hold on.
Emergency shelter, transition shelter, number five.
What number is that? If everybody will start with the number?
Number five, Southside.
Okay, so that's the other Southside. And what was the number that you want to put in there?
Uh, 52.
Okay, hold on. We get, this is Jude, Southside, specific, and emergency. Would you give me those numbers again, please, sir? Specific assistance, you wanted to go to where? That was a 19, or somewhere over there?
20, that's the...
You wanted to go to 20, and on the emergency?
52.
I think we have enough.
What they requested?
Yes.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, what have we been previously, what has Southside previously received from the Services Advisory Board in past years?
That, I don't know, would have been helpful, but we didn't ask for it. But remember that they are also getting, but it's for housing rehab, that's a different category.
I know, there's a couple different programs. I just was curious, what they've received in the past, and according to what they're asking for this time around?
Um, Hayden, if you'll unhide a couple of columns, I believe it's at the far right to show the prior two years. I think that's where.
But just to comment on Southside, there's been a lot of synergy and a lot of, like, rising to the occasion with the, an organization, brick and mortar organization that's been in our community for, you know, decades.
Yes, they, they are, and they have. The specific assistance, and this isn't far against Southside, but I noticed, and this is from Ms. Reyes, we have a number of different organizations that are doing the same thing. They're providing utility assistance. But yet, what we did, and I believe in years past, until we paid off everybody's utility bill, the amount of money that we had wasn't even fully used that we distributed through community action.
Was that during COVID?
No, I'm talking about years past.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, years past.
I mean, I don't think it was even fully utilized during COVID. We could verify that, but I don't think it was. And that was part of the issue, was people were saying they were having difficulty with the application, or they didn't have all the information to fulfill the requirements, and so that was why they weren't distributing all of the money.
Right.
Yeah, I will say, from my experience with Southside, or... Yeah, I will say, from my experience with Southside, um, or folks who have used Southside, Southside provides a much more, just like one-on-one, um,
We want stuff.
Services to help our neighbors navigate applying for services.
Yeah.
So I think that kind of speaks to, I mean, Community Action, their application's a little bit intense and stuff, so, yeah.
Well, can we make it, where if they don't use the money, the money, they gotta surrender the money back to us?
Does it, does it come back, or does it just build? Or do we give them less the next year to keep them at the same level? Okay, here's still, I, I don't, I don't want to go through all that today.
I don't know the answer to that right now.
But, but I would really like for, for these different organizations that are doing utility assistance, um, that if we've got money sitting there that's not being used, then why are we doing HSAB money to give to them to give for utility assistance? That, that needs, we, we need a better way of doing this, and I, and I just wanted to lay that out there. I appreciate that Southside may be a one-stop shop, I don't know about if Community Action be, can be considered that, but we need some coordination with this stuff. So, anyway, that's just where I wanted to say a couple of things. Council, um, I need to hear numbers from you. Uh, the first number would be on Southside Community Center, uh, they asked for twenty, uh, they were recommended at four, and then for emergency, uh, they were recommended at fifty-two, this is the emergency shelter, and Mr. Prather is recommending that. So I need two numbers from you as I go around the table. I'm gonna start on this end, Mr. Mendoza.
Actually, if I can ask staff, what's the current?
Sure.
Amount that we have sitting, that we have available?
We've got some.
Please.
But we're not through yet, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you now, I'm, I'm gonna suggest a much higher number for the food bank. Drove up here yesterday, there's food distribution, I could count over fifty cars in line.
And meals, and meals on wheels.
Meals on wheels.
Both of those, yes.
Well, and that, and the thing is, we just, if we increase the, the Southside on both the numbers we're talking about, it's over half the money that we have set aside.
Yeah.
How, what was the money you're talking for the food?
I wanted to look at forty, at least.
Can we come back to that big ticket item?
So, I, 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 I'm saying maybe on this one for the specific, I, I was thinking the twenty, maybe sixteen, and for the fifty-two, I had marked at least forty, so, um, that's, that's where I'm, I'm trying to kind of go.
Middle of the road there.
Okay.
So, um-
I can do forty on number five.
Hold on, uh, you're going forty on the second one, okay.
Yep, and then I can, I'll do, um, I'll do twelve on the special assistance, which is number nineteen.
Okay, you're, you're still at twenty-fifty-two? I know, just-
I'm, I'm down for the sixteen K for the specific assistance, just because I think they do such a good job.
Mm-hmm.
With the utility assistance, and then helping them navigate other resources.
Right, and that's what we want them to do. Uh, what about the other one? The emergency, the shelter?
It's at twenty-eight-six-hundred right now.
And they asked for fifty-two?
I think like thirty.
Okay, I'll put thirty down for you. Mr. Gonzalez, your two numbers?
Uh, for that one, I'm good with thirty as well.
And the specific assistance? Utilities and the things that Ms. Garza was just talking about?
Right, what number is that?
They asked for twenty-two. Uh, we're looking at item five and item nineteen, one of the nineteenth's.
Yeah, and someone brought up forty, to bring it up to forty?
I brought, I brought up forty.
I was talking about forty for, I, I'm going to ask for forty for the food bank.
Okay.
Right.
Or more, so.
I said sixteen for specific assistance, but I think, Mayor, you said sixteen, or somebody else had said sixteen first?
I, I said sixteen.
Yeah, I'm fine with sixteen for that.
Mr. Gonzalez, where are you for specific assistance for Southside, utility and other help?
Um, I'm, I'm good with, with forty on that.
They didn't ask for forty, it was asked for twenty-two, and we're talking sixteen-ish.
Okay, well, just give them, I don't know why I wrote forty there, just give them sixteen.
Okay. Mr. Mendoza?
I am fine with sixteen on that as well, yes, ma'am.
And the emergency?
I'd like to stick with, stick with thirty on that right now.
Mr. Scott, need your two numbers?
This is worse than bingo.
Forty, at number five, and then, uh, nineteen was twelve, I think, or twelve?
I, I said twelve, but most people like sixteen, I'm gonna change to sixteen. Mr. Prather, you started out with the higher, are you okay with sixteen? What about the other, the emergency?
What was the highest reaction?
We got three forties and three thirties.
Three forties and three thirties?
Yep. You want forty, okay, so we're at sixteen and forty. Okay, um, I'm gonna go next, and, um, for the food bank, um, they asked for fifty-five, recommendation was thirty, I want to put the, I want to put forty out there. For more.
Fine by me, ma'am.
Food bank, forty, I'm hearing, uh, I think I heard a yes from Mr. Prather. Oh, I'm sorry, you need to abstain, yes, you do. Okay, uh, Mr. Scott was a forty, Mr. Gleason, did you say forty? I'm a forty, Ms. Garza?
I'm forty, but I just want to like make a comment, like, um, we voted to, I think, reduce the access programs, um, but I think it's important to highlight, I think that the food bank does a phenomenal job, and they're like culturally and linguistically responsive outreach. Anybody who I've ever sent to do, um, distribution site, they have been so supportive. But organizations like, um, the access programs, I have seen them be able to, um, mm, kind of bring folks in who had never before, um, done food distribution, so they also do food distribution, so that's just something to be mindful of, um, as we're playing around with the numbers.
Access the, um-
Access does food distribution?
I'm pretty sure that that's, that's the known.
She has, she has been doing some.
Yeah, so-
Just, just a little bit.
No, it's been throughout like the whole pandemic, so we, we're in the same office, so I, I've seen, like, folks who have never before, um, I guess, I, I try to, I try to demystify the food bank, um, but some of the perceptions that you need an ID, or you, they have like these strict requirements, they, they help anybody and everybody, but I have seen them specifically, um, engage with people who had never before, uh, felt, I guess, that the food bank could assist them.
We can go back to access, but I need to go around and finish with the food bank with y'all. Are y'all?
I'm good with forty.
Forty?
I'm good with forty.
All right, so we're at forty for the food bank, let's see what our running, see what the tote board says. Okay, um-
And then I was gonna do the meals on wheels?
Yes, please.
Number twenty-one.
So, meals on wheels, where are we going?
What do we got, what do we got left?
I'd like to see go to ten.
What number was that?
Yeah, but we haven't touched all of them.
No, we haven't.
Please give us the number.
I'm gonna do twelve thousand.
No, give us the number of the items, so we can find-
Oh, I got it, I got it.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, I missed it, he, he, Mr. Gleason did say it, I just missed it.
Twenty-one thousand? Okay, they asked for fifteen, the recommendation was, I believe, three. So you were saying?
I want to do twelve.
You want to do, Mr. Gleason wants to do twelve?
I'm at fifteen.
Fifteen?
Mr. Scott's at fifteen, which is their ask, Mr. Prather? Meals on Wheels? Ask was fifteen, recommended was?
I'm comfy with twelve.
Ms. Garza's good with twelve, uh, Mr. Gonzalez?
I'm good with tw- twelve.
I'd like fifteen.
And the reason I kind of did, I came up with twelve, it was seventy-five percent of what they asked it for, and the same thing with the food bank, we were at about seventy-five percent.
I'm, I'm, I'm at fifteen, and that makes four at fifteen.
Okay, that'll work.
Uh, and, and part of this, y'all, and I know y'all know this, is it's not, uh, it's not just the food, it's the contact, it's making that connection and checking on someone every day, or every day that we deliver, or y'all deliver.
Right, yeah, I'm fine with fifteen, I think that's a great point, and then also that it's meeting that niche, um, demographic of folks who may otherwise, um, not be able to go and do their food bank.
Right, the, yeah, these are people that aren't able to go access other resources. Okay, um-
Mayor, I have one more, and I'll, I'll stop with everything.
Mr. Mendoza?
Uh, I would like to, uh, nosotros la gente, just because of- Yeah, number twenty, actually, let's look at number twenty-three right now, because twenty-five, they only asked for five, and they got five, so twenty-three, just because of how important this organization is for children, and they have a lot of work with the resource officers, I'm sorry, the family or officers, uh,
Okay.
Outreach programs that they have at school, so I'd like to raise that up to their request.
Is this the shoes?
It is the shoes, yes, ma'am, I'd like to go ahead and give them the ten that they asked for, so move from eight to ten.
Okay, yeah, I had bumped them up to eight.
They had the reward, the, they had revised it to eight already.
They originally asked for ten.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's correct, yes, I, I, I had written eight down on my sheet.
And I'm sentenced to say that they lost a lot of the old guard, that he saw his place, whatnot, and I, I think this is gonna help them quite a bit to continue what they're doing.
So your number is?
Actually, you know what, I'm, I'm gonna shoot for the fences here, uh, let me pump it up a little bit, um-
They asked for ten.
I'd like to put it at twelve.
Let's not get crazy.
I mean, you see the expression on these kids.
I, I understand the starting precedent of giving more than what people ask for is a little scary.
But due to the fact that the guard is, old guard is not there no more, you know, a lot of those people, this year or last year.
Would, would it be possible to, to, to consider the ten, which is what they asked for, and then kind of jot down some of these other organizations as something to consider with ARPA funding?
Well, and we already discussed it for twenty-twenty-four, that there could be some potential adjustments there, so, I'm at, I'm at ten, I'm okay with ten.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, get, get them what they asked for, and I think the mayor's right, we need to be a little careful about, about what somebody asked for.
Ms. Garza, you said ten?
Yeah, I'm at ten, because it, I mean, yes, the, the feels of the, of the smiles, but also, as somebody who, like, like my parents couldn't afford like shoes at one point, like, man, it is a struggle.
It's shoes for children.
Well, and they've been doing this a long time.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott?
Yeah.
Ten, ten?
I always appreciate organizations that meet the needs that you can't get otherwise, like food stamps don't cover shoes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I'm, I'm good with ten.
You're good with ten, all right, so that one's ten. Um, no?
Yeah, fifteen left.
Hold on, um, let's see, I'm looking to see where I had something different. I started, uh, rounding these up to thousands, but let me see. Um, I, I had more on, uh, than what was suggested for Salvation Army, again, emergency assistance. Um, they asked, I'm sorry, number twelve, they asked for fifty, twenty-seven-five was the recommendation, I had just written down thirty-five, because I was putting down numbers.
Salvation Army.
Hey, Mayor?
So, yes, sir?
Number six, the Casa.
Hold on, we're on Salvation Army right now.
And I will tell you, those numbers are different than it's on our sheet, too, he's gonna, yeah.
This is Salvation Army?
This is Salvation Army, and it's for their emergency assistance. Y'all, uh, climate change, we're gonna be having more of these.
Basic storms?
Yes, we are. We're going to, there's gonna be more.
Um, not storms as much as the potential downturn economies and everything else that could potentially happen.
Well, there's that too. Okay, so I'm, I'm suggesting thirty-five on Salvation Army.
How much, thirty-five for line twelve?
Yes.
Can you remind me what the, because I know they have so many programs, which one is, uh, this one about?
Emergency assistance, and I can't remember if this one also, they also help people with utilities and just things that they need. Ms. Ba- Barrett?
It's, um, literally the program where somebody comes for help with various things, so rent, food, utilities, the emergency needs like that.
Yep.
Gotcha, yes, and you wanted to increase it to how much?
Thirty-five.
I'm down for that, in particular because of their assistance with, um, getting folks, uh, to navigate getting their IDs. I think that's really important, um-
Mr. Scott, you go with thirty-five?
Yeah.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes. I owe the Salvation Army after the floods.
Mr. Mendoza?
They had a lot of hot meals out of that truck.
They're, they're one of the first people there.
They were on scene immediately.
When things need to happen.
Right, and then just like a, um, shameless plug, um, they help so much with IDs, which is super necessary and complicated, but, and get other vital records, but, um, I hope that they continue to promote our community enhanced library cards. Um, I know some folks who have been referred to the Salvation Army have done that, but, um, I think that's something that we can partner with them, so just again, like leveraging the folks that we're funding to help promote services that the city has.
Okay, council, one that I had just a question on is thirty-four. Emergency stabilization fund for the Bobcat Pride Scholarship Fund. Again, this is one entity asking for funding from another that just, I don't know, it just-
What do you mean by one entity asking for funds from another?
Well, like, like the university or this group asking, um, I, I, I don't know, maybe I just don't know enough about the, um,
Kind of get back to, that's what we're talking about.
I mean, I read the application, but I will tell you, on so, on a number of these applications, the very first thing that says, what are you gonna use this money for? They told us what they do in general, but I did not find exactly what they're gonna use this money for. Sometimes you had to dig for it, it was not clear in that first item on probably half of the ones that I looked at. Not your fault, but I'm just saying that for anybody who's gonna apply again, okay.
Well, and I, and I think there's a little bit of issue, like we were discussing earlier, was Ms. Griffin, I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, so the Bobcat Pride is a nonprofit that serves the LGBTQ community, um, they are not officially associated with Texas State, they just serve Texas State students and also anyone else up to the age of twenty-two.
Okay, so it's an independent organization?
Yes.
All right, good to know.
I think that they're, um, I, yeah, I am not comfortable reducing it, I, I think the recommendation it was to increase it, right? Um, they serve a very underrepresented and vulnerable population, and that no other organization in that list, um, has the area of expertise to work alongside with, so I strongly oppose the no.
I wasn't suggesting to change it, I just needed to learn more about it, and-
Well, and my, my concern is, look, there's a ton of organizations that give scholarships out to go to Texas State or trade schools or anything else, we, if we open this up to giving money out for college scholarships, which I think is what it is.
Oh, it's not, it's not a college scholarship.
It's not scholarships.
Well, it's called a scholarship fund.
It says, it says that, but it's-
No.
An emergency stabilization, I think, would just mean the, whatever, well, I mean, that's what, that's what it's called, I, I just don't like, it worries me that then we have fifty organizations come in and ask for money for scholarships next year, and every one of them's probably justifiable.
But they're not scholarships, right.
It's, look, and it's, it, it may not be for emergency stabilization fund, but it's called the scholarship fund.
Yeah, but I think this is, again, it's that rent, I, I, I need, I need help today, correct?
Right, I need help today, and it's about two to three hundred dollars, up to five hundred for each request, and it is for emergency funding, just like, you know, rent, food, that kind of thing.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
But, but my, my question is, who else is doing, I know you don't know, you won't be able to know, who else is doing this, and what duplication of services do we have out there? Probably a lot, maybe it's okay, but-
Item number fourteen, I, I personally have recommended a lot of people to those guys, and they always come through, and, uh, they're asking for, or they're asking for thirty, uh, you know, it's just, personally, I know they helped part of you to people with their rent and-
If I remember correctly, no, no, it was Catholic charities, I think, they were the ones that were on the spot, twenty-fifteen floods, with gift cards, get a motel room. So that wasn't the same group, nevermind.
Which organization?
It was Catholic charities.
Well, they're right by the Catholic Church, I believe, but Vincent and Paul.
I think some other to, to, like-
Mayor, can I go ahead and suggest, what I wanted to suggest?
No, shame, I'm just kidding.
I'm tired now.
We're, we're talking about three of these all at the same time, let's throw another one in the mix, Mr. Scott?
Casa.
Casa.
Uh-huh.
I'd like to get the original ask.
Hold on, I'm on the wrong line.
Number six.
You want to go from the thirteen, seven, fifty to twenty-five thousand? No, wait a minute, I'm still on the wrong line, hold on.
No, they asked for twenty, but.
They asked for twenty, and the suggestion was fifteen. Yeah, the reason I didn't have them marked is they got a lot of funding sources, and some of these other groups like the Citrus don't.
They don't.
And that was my concern with them, why I didn't have them marked to change them any.
I agree, mayor.
Others, anybody else want to change? Casa.
I'll leave it the way it is.
What about school fuel?
Hold on, let's finish Casa.
Right, and then Mr. Gonzalez.
I'm not saying any, okay.
Mr. Gonzalez teed up the Vincent de Paul.
Right, item fourteen.
So do you have a number?
Yeah, I'd like to give them what they asked for, which is thirty, I thought we were on Casa.
We're on Saint Vincent, Saint Vincent Society of Saint Vincent de Paul is what we're looking at right this minute. They asked for thirty, the recommendation was sixteen, five, a little over half. I noticed that they were helping pay utility bills. Was it really the forty-six thousand dollars in utility bills that they paid?
That I don't remember. I know they do, they do pay utility, but they pay all their emergency assistance.
Another emergency place. I thought I saw that, because I'm going, whoa, that's even more than what they're asking us for. Again, Ms. Reyes, another one, utility payments that.
I think a strength of them, again, is similar to Bobcat Pride and similar to the South Side, is that beyond the emergency aid that they're giving, they're providing that almost like caseworker, like helping people apply for more services, and I think that that's really important. They help folks if they can't help them, because I think they're out of money right now. They've referred folks to Monta Mecca and vice versa, but they have their little cheat sheet, and they're hooking people up left and right. So I, I'm down to give them some more money. I'm down for twenty.
I was going to suggest twenty-five.
What's our number?
Saint Vincent?
What's our balance? Eight, and we've still got some others that we can talk about. Okay, Mr. Gonzalez is at thirty, I'm at twenty-five, Ms. Garza's at twenty. I need some more numbers, or I need numbers from different people. Mr. Mendoza? Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott?
I'm at twenty.
Mr. Gleason's at twenty.
And I can do twenty as well, mayor. Make it easier on everyone.
Twenty, and then I'd like to go back to Casa.
Okay, Mr. Scott, where are you on Saint Vincent de Paul?
Twenty, twenty.
All right, so we are at twenty on that one. So now what's our balance?
Four thousand.
Four thousand, and did you say you want to go back to Casa?
Yeah.
I've already asked, and I didn't see.
Enough support.
Not to change what was recommended.
Put the rest in school fuel.
Less than five thousand. Again, school fuel, we're feeding, we're feeding kids.
They are. I'm fine with giving the rest of school fuel.
School fuel, forty-eight something.
They were asking for.
Balance.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one of the sixes, they asked for thirty-five, the recommendation was nineteen, and you want to do the forty-eight, twenty-four, or whatever it is. That's for Mr. Gleason, I think I can go with that. I'm looking for uses or a different number for school fuel.
Sounds good.
Mr. Scott, you good with that? Yep, yep, yep. All right, whatever that balance was, four thousand, eight something, twenty-four, we'll just add it in. There we go, already done. Okay.
Mr. Meagle would put up the total, we ended up with, for school fuel, what was that total we ended up with? Twenty-four, three eighty-three, thank you very much.
Okay. Y'all, let's start at the top, y'all just look at this, because we're about to approve this this evening. Now, one of the things we said we wanted to talk about was that communities and schools, we set that at thirty-five hundred. And schools, where's that? Where is it?
We had one more, C I S D one on here we didn't discuss, the post-pandemic at-risk recovery.
Can y'all tell me the number?
It is number twenty-three.
And I was looking at twenty-seven, that was the one we said we wanted to come back to. Yes, the post-pandemic at risk, I guess, they asked for twenty-five, and the recommendation was for five.
Look, I mean, they got COVID money just like we did.
I, that's what I mean, they, they, I don't know if this is something that they could fund. Yeah, and they tax more than we do. And I don't have, I read all these applications again today, and that was a long, that was a lot of reading. And I made notes, but, so, let's see. And Griffin, didn't, wasn't this in one long document when we looked at this before, instead of having to download thirty-eight different documents? Was this in one document before?
I don't know, I asked for the full applications, and they were like folders within folders, so I don't know.
Let me look real quick. Okay, what was that one again? Post-pandemics.
Number twenty-three.
S M C I S D. Also, the names of these don't always match, and a couple of them I downloaded, and they were just spreadsheets, so. School recovery, post-pandemic at-risk recovery. Oh, yeah. I remember this now. As school-aged parents. Yeah. And there's parenting, it's a parenting, part of the parenting program. And that one was not recommended for any funding.
They had five thousand on there.
Did they? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm looking the wrong column. It was recommended at five. We're out of money.
I mean, and well, and I look at it like this, if this is something that we have a joint program together with the, with the school district, where we've got specific resources, we're throwing in something collaborative, I don't have a problem with it, but just us funding some of their programs, when we have other, when we specifically have organizations.
I really wish that the school district ones came through Core Four for recommendation. Would be better, okay. Counsel, are there any changes that you want to make? Because we're ready to do this, and when we approve it, the check issuing process will begin in a few days, I know next week's spring break.
So we don't issue checks anymore, we do have them apply for reimbursement, so, but we will be signing the contracts for all of these over the next few weeks, and then working with them to get the funding rolling as they get us documentation.
What I really wanted to, what I really meant to say is confirming, confirming that they're going to get the funding.
Yeah.
Which would be the contract.
Yes.
All right.
I just have like two comments, one is that I just want the record to reflect that I fundamentally disagree with the full removal of item thirty-seven. I feel like that is like a substantial amount of money that we have just been like dismissive of the board's recommendation. That's the iron sharpens iron, and I didn't hear particularly compelling rationale for that. And then similarly, the reducing home center from twenty thousand to fifteen thousand. But generally, I guess I'm fine with the rest.
Okay, well, I believe we balance, so.
Did we decide on the post-pandemic at-risk recovery from the I S Q?
Well, it was five, that's what is out there, and nobody's making a motion, or nobody's asking to change it, and we don't have any money left, so you'd have to take money from someplace else, so it doesn't look like.
No, I mean, we could take money from here, and we could take money from there and put it someplace else, if there was.
Well, you got to say what you want to do, because I need to close this out.
I'll leave it alone.
Yeah. Okay, so, Ms. Quirk. I didn't ask for motions to amend on all of these, but we have agreement of the changes that we wanted to make. Could I just say, I would like to amend based on all of our conversation today with the changes? I'll make that amendment in order to, so that we have a formal way of changing what was presented to us, would that be all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then I will make the amendment to make the changes that we discussed this evening. And that is going to be the food bank to forty thousand. Meals on Wheels to fifteen. Nosotros La Hente Shoe Program, ten. Salvation Army, thirty-five. Saint Vincent de Paul at twenty. School fuel at whatever that number was. Twenty-four, three eighty-three. And if I'm on my other page, here it is. To drop the M E L I to zero. Home Center to fifteen. Treasured Protege to zero, Rough Draft to zero. S M C I S D Mental Health to three hundred, I'm sorry, three thousand five hundred. Access to, what was your number?
I had thirty.
Thirty. I'd appreciate it if you wouldn't do that, it's not necessary.
I would appreciate a lot of things, mayor, I would appreciate a lot of things.
Yeah, well, the little tsk, tsk, tsk isn't helping. Okay, Youth Service Bureau to ten. South Side Special, whatever that was, to sixteen. Emergency to thirty. And I believe I have covered them all. All the changes that we have made.
Second.
Wait a minute, mayor, I do.
Did I miss one?
I think we had one potential mistake there, was the South Side Emergency, was it thirty or forty?
Thirty.
I had it down as forty as well.
I think it was forty.
I'm sorry, you're right, it is forty, you're right.
As long as we had it correct up there.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Yes, we had half thirties and half forties, and I didn't have the other one written down. Okay, that one's at forty. So, any others I missed? I'm sorry, who seconded that? Mr. Scott is seconding that motion to amend, so we will vote on the motion to amend first, so, Mr. Vina.
Okay, Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Begrudgingly. Begrudgingly aye or begrudgingly no?
Begrudgingly aye.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
There's no further conversation, we'll vote on the main motion.
All right, Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza? Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
And Mr. Prather?
Okay, counsel, we'll go back, and we are on item eleven.
Consider proof ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine on the first of two readings, amending chapter two, article three, division five zoning board of adjustments of the San Marcos City Code by amending section two point one five one eight, membership from three years to two years to comply with the Texas Local Government Code, section two one one point zero zero eight, board of adjustment and provide an effective date.
Looking for a motion? Mr. Scott, was that you? You need your microphone on if you're going to make a motion.
Motion to approve, second, from Councilor Scott.
I'll take that motion from Mr. Prather, or anybody with their microphone on wants to second it?
I'll second it.
Mr. Gleason. Any questions, counsel? Let's vote.
Right, Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
And Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item twelve.
All right, Consider Proof of Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ninety-six on the second of two readings, amending chapter six animals.
Oh, hold on a second. Counsel, would y'all be okay? I think thirteen and fourteen are going to be real quick, I think we're going to spend some time on this one. Well, we've got some folks that, I think those two will go quickly. Are y'all good with that?
Sure. Yeah, that's fine.
Let's go thirteen.
That's fine.
Consider proof resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-nine R, authorizing proceedings with issuance of certificates of obligation and further directing the publication of notice of intent to issue the City of San Marcos, Texas Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation for the Wallace Offsite Drainage Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed four million sixty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
For a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Prather, seconded by Mr. Mendoza, any questions? Let's vote.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr., Ms. Garza? Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Item fourteen.
Consider proof of resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty R, authorizing proceedings with issuance of certificates of obligation and further directing the publication of notice of intention to issue City of San Marcos, Texas Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation for the Castle Forest Drainage Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed one million one hundred and twenty thousand.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Scott, any questions? We'll vote.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
Yes, all right, now, twelve.
Okay, Consider Proof of Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ninety-six on the second of two readings, amending chapter six animals of the San Marcos City Code to amend definitions, delegate authority for department to waive or reduce fees, limit reasons to impound cats, delete stray hold requirement in some instances, include structural requirements for spay, neuter, and microchipping, create an offense for failure to reclaim or surrender pet upon notice, and requirements for pet stores slash pet stores, including regulation of source of pets, and provide for permitting and inspections, repealing any conflicting provisions, and provide an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Prather?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Questions? Did you have anything for us in particular, Mr. Gar? Are you just looking for, are you here to answer questions?
I'm here to answer questions, I can, I think we've been through this quite a bit, so.
Yep. We have, we have, okay. Questions?
I have my hand up, mayor. Mr. Prather had his first.
Oh, we're not doing Zoom right now.
No, I don't have any questions, my hands.
No, but.
Have it.
And it's a good one, and I thank you for it, so go ahead with your concerns.
All right.
Or questions, or whatever it is.
All right, first off, I'm going to be in support of this, and one of the things that I think that I'm happy about that I brought up was the K-9 Care Certified, I know this is a new program, and Purdue University, you know, is trying to find, you know, semi-round, end around to, you know, end puppy mills. And I was, when I first saw that program, because I don't know if I was the one that brought it up last time, a council or not, but, you know, there's a lot of veterinarian organizations, a lot of organizations in general, trying to find a real solution to the end of puppy mills. And I know this may not be perfect, but this might fit pick-a-pet, it might. And so I was glad that Pick-a-Pet agreed to look at this, and that staff would help them entertain this as an option. I think that's a program that might work, I don't know for sure that it will, but I just wanted to thank the community for putting so much time into this. You know, one of the amendments that's in here is the five-day hold for cats, I know that was one that was hard to swallow for, you know, that was, it's in here, the places of the.
What page are you on, sir?
I'm reading the committee boards, the three amendments which were made at that time, oh!
What page in the packet are you on?
I am on page three fifty-two.
Thank you.
And I'm on the, basically, the, the action report.
Okay.
I didn't get, I didn't get down into the forty-page ordinance to find exactly where it's at. The version presented here on March seventh basically is the same version as the first reading, the three amendments which were made at the time, which include a five-day hold for cats, three months or older, and which change a sterilization requirement for a third impound, adding the time of inflammation, and gives the pet stores a year before sourcing a pest become effective. And all three of those amendments are in the new ordinance. And all three of those amendments are in the new ordinance, is that correct? Correct. Okay. And those were things I was semi-worried about. But because some of those are in there, and I know the animal committee discussed these, that I'm gonna be supporting the overall amendment, the overall ordinance, because some of these things in it. And look, five days might be a tad long, and look, we can always review this, but we've debated this whole ordinance long enough. And because of the Purdue University potential program, the other things, I think there's some compromises in here, all right? And so I'm gonna be supporting this.
Okay, there's nothing about the Purdue K-9 Care in the ordinance?
No, but it is the one-year delay, and it is giving them.
It will give them time to work on it.
And we're putting it in here that we're gonna look at this as an option if it's.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna hold, you know.
There's some issues with the Purdue.
I knew, and it may not be the only program out there. It was just the one that I ran across, that someone had mentioned to me, and that.
The pick-a-pet people told me about it.
They didn't tell me, I found out from somewhere else. And so, and then when I researched it, you know, it's, everybody's trying to find a solution to get rid of puppy mills. And no one can present us with something that says, this is gonna end a puppy mill. But I'm glad people are thinking out of the box, right? And we can't hold up this whole ordinance forever over one particular issue.
We're not going to.
That's why I'm gonna support the overall ordinance as it is. There could be changes made in the future. If it's, five days is too long, and we can present evidence that that's too long, and I know that's gonna put some strain on resources. But, you know, I, I, overall, I think there's a good compromise in there, so I'm gonna support it.
Okay. In the staff report, Mr. Carr, where it says a version presented here, it's basically the same as the first with the three amendments. So, we kept those, but all the other things that we talked about re-roll back, is that correct?
Yes, so, everything we talked about on November first, adding the three amendments to it, that's what this ordinance covers.
All right.
I'm just confused because I was under the impression during our last Animal Services Committee that we were not doing the five-day hold on cats over three months.
Yeah, I thought that was one of the things that we took out.
Cuz initially, I was in support of that, just being a diehard cat lady rescuer, but after, like, really unpacking what the animal advocates were saying, and just like looking at the numbers and hearing staff concerns, I reverted, like, I, I like changed my mind, but.
Well, like Councilmember Gleason said, there was a lot in this ordinance. I mean, it was very long, and we can always come back and make little tweaks that.
But aren't we doing the trap, neuter, and return?
Yes.
Okay, so, what's with this holding cats for five days? Is that non-community cats?
Well, how do you distinguish them?
Depends on where they came from, and you may not know.
May not have a chip.
Yeah, it's the, and this is where it gets a little murky. If they're a community cat, they're a little bit skittish and stuff, not just because they're scared, but you can tell kind of which is a community cat.
Who's bringing them in?
Yes, where they caught them from, and again, this is one of those areas we're gonna have to navigate a little bit, and we'll probably be making a little bit of recommendations for change.
I just thought that staff wasn't, like, comfy with that.
Yeah.
Cuz of like the implications that it has in terms of.
It puts a little pressure on, but as Mr. Gleason said, it's, we did some compromise, you know, we've talked about it, and so we could talk about it for another three hours tonight, but we would rather just get it passed and then tweak it.
I was just confused, cuz I remember specifically talking about that during the last Animal Services Committee, so it kind of catches me off-guard here.
My concern is, I do a lot of traveling, and if a cat gets out and doesn't have a chip, how are you gonna know where he came from? And he'll let me handle him, he probably won't let anybody else. He's the biggest baby on the planet. And if I'm out of town for seventy-two hours, he could get neutered and dropped off someplace in the neighborhood and never be seen again. You know, and that's not good for him either. So, my problem is, is the hold and the neutering and the return and the combination, and I know putting, leaving them in there is hard on them, it's hard on staff, it's a drain on the system. But a lot of pets out there, a lot of people have a cat that may not be chipped. And if they get out, it's something that they love. And it can be, and it can take a few days to either realize it, or by the time you get to a shelter, and so, you know, I just, a shelter should be a place of not just get them in and out. I know that's what we want to have happen, but it's kinda like, you know, we didn't just turn somebody loose if we don't know exactly where they're going, or. So, I just have concerns of that a potential pet could end up there and get let back out, and there needs to be time for someone who owns a pet to recover them. That's the only reason I was going with that.
But wasn't it usually three days?
I don't remember what the time used to be.
Yeah, and in the, uh, the packet that I downloaded and looked at over the weekend, I, there was a redline version in it. I'm not finding the redline version in this packet. I find the ordinance, but I don't find the redline version, so I'm a little, little lost.
Yeah, I'm not sure it was, I did attach the redline version.
Yeah, it was in the packet I had at home.
Right.
So.
Go ahead, Ms.
Okay, so, Darian Krupinski, Assistant Director of Neighborhood Enhancement, you are correct. So, the original ordinance, or as it is now until it gets revised, is any animal with any means of traceable identification, whether it's a microchip with information, a tag, anything like that, we keep them for a minimum of five days before we decide, you know, if they're suitable for adoption, surgery, whatever the case is. Without identification, it's three days. So, what we were proposing to do was eliminate the stray hold for any cat unless it had some form of identification.
Cuz we had that whole conversation at the last meeting, cuz remember, I kept saying, but by the time you hold them and sterilize them and this, that, and the other, you're probably gonna have them for at least two days.
So, the minutes say forty-eight to seventy-two hours is what was discussed, but I think our instructions were to bring back the ordinance as presented originally with the changes that were requested from the first meeting.
Oh. Yeah, that's not what I thought we did.
I don't know what you were expecting.
Or I didn't remember when that change was made, and I thought that was one that we said we were gonna roll back to where we were.
It's possible, so it wasn't really clear, so we both went back and rewatched it, and I think, I don't remember there was ever a vote on stray hold, just discussion.
Well, I thought we came to consensus on there.
At the committee meeting, right?
Uh-huh.
Right. I guess, I think what you're saying, so here, um, on where it says, like, the Council Committee Board and Commission Action, it says, the version presented here for the March seventh meeting is basically the same version as the first reading with the three amendments, right? And it was places a five-day hold on cats over three months old, right? And then in the bottom, in recommendation, so the next page, it says, stricter spay-neuter requirements and reduced or no stray hold for cats of any age without traceable identifications. So, how do those two mesh?
We're looking at the R.
And like, what, I just wanna know what the ordinance says now, cuz I feel like those are, those, uh, those are.
Yeah, does anybody know what section that was?
No.
It would be six point zero three zero C two.
Six, hold on, six point, let me get to six point zero three zero.
Page three seventy-three, Mayor.
Thank you.
Three seven two?
Three, three seventy-three.
Thirty-three. Okay. And this is under the retention of impounded animals?
What section did you say, Greg?
C one.
C two.
C two.
Which section?
Six point zero three zero.
Yeah.
Princess C C two.
Page C, uh, page three seventy-three.
But in cats, so C one is where the last sentence, and this might be what you're referring to. The exception for cats is that they must be kept for not less than five days, and that's what we added in in response to the discussion and Mr. Gleason's concerns.
Oh.
We already do five days for everything else. The only thing different here was three days for unidentifiable cats.
If we keep all cats for five days, we're gonna be full of cats, aren't we?
Well, and I think.
But remember, this is only unidentifiable.
And most of them are unidentifiable?
Correct.
If we go back to the, the study that was commissioned by the county, and she spent a lot of time with our staff in Shelter, Dr. Pizano, the emphasis on, the emphasis is on keeping healthy community cats out of the shelter in the first place.
That's where I'm trying to stay.
Yes, and if they do happen to come in, and they can't be identified as belonging to someone, the best thing you can do for that cat is get them back where they were trapped, let them right back where they're comfortable, and they'll find their way home.
Right.
Sometimes it's more than one home, it's three or four.
Right, but it, and remember my concern about the little old lady going to nursing home, can't take her cat with her? That is a whole different situation, and y'all would hang on to that cat for a while, correct?
Not if it's, not if it's unidentifiable.
Because it's voluntarily surrendered, and that's a different section.
If there are owners, surrender, transfer of ownership comes to us immediately upon that, with the proper paperwork.
And then we hold on to them for a while?
No, we just vet them and make sure they're healthy and spayed-neutered and put them up for adoption.
But that's.
That's what I mean, but when I say hold on to them, I mean until they're adopted. You're not taking that cat and putting it back out in the wild.
No, if it was not an outdoor cat and it doesn't have a caregiver, we're not putting it back out anywhere.
Right, you're gonna keep it for a while.
We're, well, hopefully not, hopefully we'll adopt it into a home.
Well, I meant keep it until adoption.
Yes.
The difference is there, that's an identifiable cat that came in and was identified as being surrendered.
Yes.
What I'm talking about are the cats, if I have a cat that comes in and out, or goes in and out, and doesn't necessarily have a chip, and seventy-two hours later, they're neutering it and turning it back loose cuz they think it's community cat, that cat's not gonna survive in the wild. And it's only giving me seventy-two hours to retrieve a pet that may not be identified. I just want the extra two days in there to make it consistent.
Chip that cat.
Well, you know, we probably should, but during the floods, that didn't happen.
Right.
You know, and during emergencies, it didn't happen, and, and, you know, if you go and adopt a pet from someplace else, or if you adopt a kitten from somebody that's got them in the barn, it may take you a couple of months before you get to it. That's just all there is to it. And if that cat gets out, that cat now is gonna end up not on a hold for five days, but three days. That's my only concern. I know it puts extra strains on it, seventy-two hours, when we're doing five days for everything else, that's my, you're singling out cats to only seventy-two hours.
And I'm just asking that we consider, if we trust in the advice we were given by the experts, it was that if that cat is returned to where they were trapped, they will do fine, and they'll find their way back. If it's, for example, if it's your cat, back to your homes.
Maybe they got scared of fireworks or scared of something else.
Well, if he gets brought back to where they picked him up, but your point is that cat could be quite a ways away.
Could be a long ways away, and now it's been through a surgery and everything else, and, and my, I'm just trying to give people who potentially own a pet that is not identifiable, an additional forty-eight hours to retrieve that cat. That's all I'm trying to do. That simple.
I think that.
We do it for five days for dogs, right? If a dog comes in and it's five days unidentifiable, or what's the, what is the time?
It's three and five.
It's, but for dogs, it's three days of unidentifiable also?
Correct, yeah.
And that's not very long.
And it's three business days, so it's, you know, we don't count days that we're not open for reclaim.
I think it's important to note that we had a conversation regarding that outreach of it all, right? So, to, to Mr. Stapp's point about, you know, putting the cat back into where it was found, and it'll find its way home, things that helped with that, from my experience, has been that animal shelter, whenever, like, my marble went missing, they gave me good advice, like, and the animal advocates, and we talked about coming up or investigating how we can come up with something like the Friends of the Library, or something like that, the mayor brought up, and they would be able to help assist with that type of outreach. So, you know, regarding a cat that's not microchipped, like, even helping create community outreach activities to really show our neighbors why it's important to have them microchipped, stuff like that. So, I think that kind of mediates a lot of the, those concerns. But we can't even get to that part, cuz I was interested in eventually maybe having more staff that could help with that, but we can't get to that point unless we, if we keep housing all these cats, like, we, it's draining the resources and putting a lot of constraints on staff.
I'm just concerned, somebody's gonna leave for a weekend, be gone two days, and then realize their cat is gone, or an animal's gone, and takes them a day to realize, maybe I should go to the shelter, and that animal's not there anymore. That's just all there is to it. Seventy-two hours is not very much time if you have an animal missing. Dogs, I mean, may be a little different in that you probably aren't leaving your dog alone for seventy-two hours. My cats, I could lock them in the house for a week. They got food, they got water, they got litter box, so.
Hold on, we got your point. I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask this again, cuz I'm now getting lost. The community cats, TNR, it's in here. We're gonna do that?
Yes.
Continue to do it. So, which cats are gonna be under this five-day hold?
So, so our idea with TNR community cats is that they're identified, right? So, if we, we just do TNR right now, if we know it's a feral, we know where it came from, somebody's been monitoring this colony.
Exactly.
We know where they're going back.
That's what I kept saying, you know where it came from.
Same thing with these community cats. I mean, it, you know, if there's a caregiver in the area, and it's like, hey, this cat had a litter, we just need to trap them, TNR, put them back out.
Right.
That's.
Fix them, put them back. Okay, so that doesn't apply, so, so we have that, and we can still do that with this ordinance the way it is?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, and from what I'm understanding, for the most part, when an animal comes in, if it's surrendered, it's not, the five-day doesn't count. If it's done from the trap and neuter return, it's not part of the five-day. So, I mean, I would think that would cover quite a few of the animals coming in. I'm just concerned about the individual pet owner, some little kid, you know, down the street.
We got it.
And, you know, our response to that, and Dr. Pizano's response to that, is the percentage of cats that are reclaimed is very low. And I'm sorry, I don't have that percentage with me.
I think you said two percent.
It's pretty, it's pretty, yeah, I think that's a standard number for San Marcos over a certain period. I don't have that number with me, but it's pretty low.
I've had to recover a couple from over there.
Well, and that's, that's, that's why I was willing to go down to not the five, because they were gonna be there for at least forty-eight hours.
And realistically, the day that they come in is basically day zero, so if we're keeping them, you know, we're not counting till the next day.
Exactly, they're gonna be there at least two. I'm, I'm willing to go from five to three. Is that really gonna help y'all much?
I mean, anything helps, it, you know, it's your will, it's your decision. You know, I think, like you said, if we're taking true feral cats or community cats, keeping them in the shelter any longer than necessary is just torturing them, so, you know, if we're really going to have a program that we're trying to keep cats out of the shelter, the least number of days, the better.
Okay, but we're now doing the TNR, which is gonna help a lot. Before, you're keeping them all, right?
Right.
Okay, so let's let the TNR play out, let's leave this where it is. Six months from now, we will be through the kitten season when y'all really fill up, correct?
Kitten season is forever.
Yeah, yeah, we don't get much break.
I thought kitten season was spring.
Not lately.
Mostly, mostly, yes.
Right, that's what y'all have said, this, this spring is the worst.
It's the worst, yes.
The most, I should say most, not worst, cat lover, it's the most. Okay, can we just let this go for now?
Yes, we've been.
In six months, and y'all let us know.
You know I'm gonna say something?
The committee, let the committee know. If you got something to say, now's the time.
Yes, ma'am. Again, I'm gonna shoot for the ballpark here. As I understand, the spay-neutering for the intake is after the second time, as it sits right now, right? If we obtain a piece of property, whether it's a dog or a cat, and it's the second time we've taken them in as a lost pet.
Correct, but it's, our interpretation of what the council wanted was to put it on the third impoundment, so that's.
But as it stands right now, we are at two impoundments.
Yes, yes.
Honestly, I would like to stay with that just because of the fact, and I'm just not referring to cats here, cats are.
Is it two now?
It is two now. It is two now.
I'd like to go back to two, not because of cats.
It is two now.
Is it two in what we're gonna vote on?
But they wanna vote for three here.
No, it got bumped to three in the last revision.
And look, and one of the things I...
Oh, okay, I'm with you, wait, wait, let Matthew finish.
Well, the reason I have to go back, and let's take cats out of it, I'm looking at just dogs by itself.
Yeah.
You live in most neighborhoods, you have a lot of irresponsible owners who, not, not so much the dog gets out, the responsible ones will sit there and go, oh my gosh, my dog got out, let me try to repair the fence, or whatever it is, even if it's makeshift, sometimes under the job. I'm referring to those animals, the dogs that get out there in the neighborhoods, that we have some of those irresponsible owners who just don't care, and then if a dog is not neutered, they will travel tens of thirty, forty miles to get to a female.
Mm-hmm.
And we also have, let's consider where San Marcos is, there's a lot of open trails that you can go through the park. My concern is if we're doing the TNR, then let's be responsible and go back to two holdings for the dogs also, we need to have some responsibility.
Right, yes, I, I have a difficult time because I, I personalize this too much, right? Like, so I think of the times that, you know, like the scenario that Mr. Gleason brought up, my cat could run out, da-da-da-da-da, but separating that from like the bigger picture, and I think it, it's the most responsible thing to do, and it, it's focusing more on like the macro level, right? Like, we cannot keep putting all this burden on the animal shelter, because we're personalizing situations that may or may not happen. I mean, I'm knocking on wood, watch my cat run out, I don't know, they're all fixed, it's fine, but it stresses me out.
Well, one of the things about this is...
Where, hold on, where is this third impound, because I'm, look, I wanna make a motion to amend.
It's on page three seventy-four, Mayor.
Thank you.
D six, D six.
Oh, just found it, okay.
One of the things I wanted to say is, this is an all-encompassing document, there's, there's a lot of changes in here, we don't know what those other changes mean, we don't need to go all the way on all of this right now, that's, that's part of why I wanna, we don't know what the spay-neuter return program's gonna look like for the cat program, right? How many cats is that gonna take out of the system? We don't know, right? And so that is gonna take some pressure off, right? And I'm gonna tell you now, I experienced two floods in nine months, I was in a motel for nine months.
Yep.
Those animals came and went like you can't believe, at one point, there were several dogs and cats being fed, because no one was living at home, and the neighborhood was ransacked, so, you know, and to say that's not gonna, your pet's not gonna get out twice, and the next thing you know, you're...
If there's flooding, then we can, we can stop.
But it's in the beginning ordinance.
I, but I think it's...
If you listen to me, hold on, what we can do is when there is a flood, then we can talk about it, and we can ask them to perhaps do something different. That doesn't happen all the time, and I don't wanna set rules for something that happens not that often.
If you don't codify at the next council that if there's a flood ten years from now, isn't gonna remember this conversation?
They don't have to remember, we're gonna have staff, or somebody's gonna know somebody in the flooded area, and they can bring it up.
If it's not codified, it's not codified.
I wish to make an amendment, and that is on whatever, whatever, whatever six, where it says if an animal is impounded for running at large for a third time, is that where I need to say it, second time?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, change third to second, and that's my motion, and that's what's on the floor right now.
I, I think our animal advocates are...
I'm looking for a second.
A second.
Give Mr. Scott a second, okay, now Ms. Garza.
I, I, I just think it's, our animal advocates will step up to the plate during emergencies and, and put a call for, for...
I believe it will be brought to the council's attention, whoever it is at that time, but what's on the floor right now is changing the impound from third to second.
If you think, if you think that's gonna be a major priority in the middle of that disaster, you gotta be kidding yourself.
I, I lived in your same neighborhood, Mr. Gleason, and I'll do it.
I'm, we're, we're, we, we need to move on, Mr. Gleason, I've got a motion.
Well, I'm gonna tell you now, you have a motion.
Mr. Gleason, I have a motion to amend, we need to get that one taken care of.
Okay, that's fine.
So, Mr. Trevino, let's vote on my motion that the sterilization happens on the second impound, not the third.
All right, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Nope.
Okay, sorry, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
And Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes five to two.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry, can I ask you for clarification?
Go right ahead.
C one, did that require an amendment as well? I wasn't clear on where y'all ended on three mon, uh, three-day hold or five-day hold, I'm sorry.
Um...
Currently five.
Right.
I thought y'all had said you wanted to change that to three, if you do, that requires an amendment.
I know that, and that's when I said, let's let the rest of this ride, let's see what the TNR does, report back to the committee in six months, that's when we had the, I made the mistake of saying when kitten season was over, and apparently that was completely wrong, but I'm going with what I've been told, or what I thought I'd been told, regardless, I'm, I'm willing to let that one ride, let the committee, because we meet quarterly, I think, and so maybe not, it wouldn't be the next meeting, but the next meeting, let us know how all this going, how TNR is going, et cetera, and we'll discuss it then.
Okay.
Can I ask one question about details?
Go ahead.
So with the intake on the second or third time, whatever we voted on for them to be spayed and neutered, are they gonna be receiving healthcare while they're there with you as far as vaccinations and things like that?
I asked... All animals receive vaccination upon intake, and then any other medical care, obviously if we can find an owner, we're gonna try to find them, it just goes on severity of medical need or injury, we'll get them the care that they need regardless.
So let's say you do take in an animal, let's say he, it's a fourteen-year-old hound dog, who has obviously had several babies, and is not in any condition to be spayed or neutered, or spayed, would you, what would you do in a case like that?
Uh, well...
Yeah, there are exceptions to prevent this, and so age, medical condition, if it's a breeder-type dog, you know, so it's not across the board.
Are there any exceptions that the owner were to come in, and it is a responsible owner, and there are exceptions where the dog just consistently digs out, are there exceptions that you will make for that owner, by case to case?
Exceptions like what?
Like, like, let's say it's a husky, which they have a tendency to dig out every fifteen minutes, and this responsible owner does take the steps to work on it, but this is one of those one-in-a-thousand cases where it's just the animal.
Well, the responsible owner will be, have that dog microchipped, and they'll know who it belongs to.
This is true, okay.
Yes, and then, so, just so you know, if it was a flood, if it was the Fourth of July, and we get some animals, we're not gonna just push them through the system, we know what's happening.
Right.
And for the dogs that get out and stuff, you know, we're taking a step further, there's some people can't afford to fix their fence. So we have a reused warehouse that we provide, we've given dog houses, because a person had it chained to a tree, and that, that's not a good thing, so we got a dog run built for them with a dog house, we provide fencing material, it might not match exactly, but that's our creed, you know, we help the community with the best we can.
Yeah.
There are some people that they don't care, and it just keeps getting out, so...
I just wanna ensure that we do have that ability, that the one-in-every-thousand case is where there is a responsible owner, they're just trying to do the best they can, that we would take a look at that, and...
They do.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was on the record, and we did say something like that.
To your, directly to your question, that owner that's really concerned, that's calling us every fifteen minutes looking for their dog, we know that that's a different situation than the person we have to hunt down to, we think this is your dog, because the neighbor says it's always out, and we take that into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Cool.
The only other thing I'll throw out, too, is, Mr. Mendoza, with, with the surgery, if that does happen, you're gonna have to pay that, pay for that, and reimburse that before you retrieve them, too, there's gonna be an additional cost burden of that, retrieving them.
Well, so we're not gonna do a surgery if it's still under a stray hold, though?
Okay, back to the thing, I'm willing to, to say, like, agree with the mayor, like, let's fine the five days, whatever, we'll let it play out, what did you say, like six months, or check in? Like, I feel like that, that'll be, that's like me meeting Mr. Gleason's concerns halfway, we voted on the, the reducing the impound, I think I won't push that much for the, the other one, like, I feel like...
Yeah, I'm letting it go for now.
Yeah.
Honestly, I think that's fair, because if we're gonna be doing the spay-neutering that quickly, I think it's only fair to have a longer hold for animals that we have to share about.
Well, we're gonna do the TNR, that means fewer cats in, so that's why I'm willing, just, let's see where this goes.
Right.
Yeah.
Reassess later.
Nope.
Trevino, let's vote on the motion on item twelve, as the ordinance, as amended, this is second reading, so it will not be coming back until we have a reason for it to come back.
All right, Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
And one last thing, so, we will be coming back anyway to talk about the certified canine care.
Right.
So, you know, we'll keep you up to speed on everything that's going on that we may need to tweak.
That'd be good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. Thanks to the animal advocates who always are on the case, okay, Mr. Trevino, are we on item sixteen now?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, let's go with sixteen, then.
Discuss and consider appointments to fill vacancies on the following boards and commissions, and provide direction to staff.
All right, council, we've got four commissions to appoint, and let's, we'll do human services first, so the floor is open for nominations, and I would like to nominate Mr. Sharif Gassis, I had a conversation with him, y'all will recall, we thought highly of him, but we ended up with him not on any of the boards.
Huh.
And I called and asked him if he'd be interested in this one, he said yes, and so that's, and he confirmed that with Mr. Trevino, and so that's why his name is on here as an option, and I, I'm putting his name in play.
I'm fine with that, I, we need three, right?
We need three. Yes, ma'am.
I, I'm fine with all three of them.
You wanna put the other two names in play?
Yes, Ms. Quinn, and then Clayton, the only thing is Clayton also wants to be in the cemetery commission, but that's his third choice, but that's the only one who applied there, so I don't know.
Uh, I, I, let's get human services going, I was really impressed with his application.
Okay, I mean, if that's, if that's his number one, then I'm fine with it, just...
It's his number one, so, um, we have three for three.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott. Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
All right, next is cemetery commission, but we just kinda blew that one out of the water, so we will...
We'll bring that back.
Continue to look at that one, next is the senior citizen advisory board.
Nominate David Ross.
All right, then we still need more, are there, and we still, we will still need one more, so we will continue to look, and we will vote, right?
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye, yes.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott, he's... Okay.
All right, CBOAA, before I do this, Mr. Trevino, the thing that we just did, where we moved it to three, because we were moving everybody to three, but now we legally discovered they need to be two, how does that change anything here, does it?
No, not really, because it's, well, I'm gonna let the staff liaison handle the stagger term, so they could correct it.
But is there anybody in their third term that shouldn't be doing a third, I mean, not third term, but third year of a term?
Oh, let me check real quick.
That, that was what I was concerned about, it doesn't, but, I don't know.
Let me see.
Something...
There's nobody that is doing a second term or a third term.
No, are they in year three of a term, which is now not legit anymore?
Uh, twenty-three, twenty-three, no, ma'am, no, they're all serving two-year terms.
Okay, even the ones that we just appointed...
Correct.
...the other day, all right, so I would like to put the names of Rodney Van Oderkerke and Cody DeSalvo in play.
And how are we gonna handle the alternate on that? Is it just the person, will we, will we actually nominate them to be alternates, or the people that get the least amount of votes?
That's a good question, I, I will, Cody said he'd been on, well, they've both been on before, yes, ma'am.
May I, Rodney Van Oderkerke was actually on his first term, and his term just expired, so it was my thought that since he was just on the board, and he just missed the application, wasn't sure he wanted to remain on the board, that we would put him in the full membership, and then start Cody as alternate one, since he had a, a gap in between his membership on this board.
That works for me.
It works for me.
Okay, so Cody is the alternate, we've already moved the alternates into the others, and all that good stuff, and...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that sounds good, I didn't see Rodney's name on here as currently in there,